Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am. Item 2.01, Major Construction Project Updates, Mr. Todd Cagles, Mr. Wes Mitchell, and Mr. Kamal Khalil.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we have with us again today Wes Mitchell and Kamal Khalil, who will do our major construction project updates. And as you guys know, there was ScanSky, our third-party consultants.
Good afternoon, everybody. Glad to be back. It's been a little bit, so there's been a ton of progress on the CTE project. I'm gonna try to keep it short and sweet, because if there's a type of construction going on that you can do, they're basically doing it out there right now. We've got about 150 people onsite, and they're doing just about everything you can do in construction. So, we'll start with site work. It's winding down as far as the big earth-moving operations. If you drive by, what you see is almost what you're gonna get as far as the way the site's gonna look. We're still working some on some rock in the east, where that parking lot in the east is gonna be. Just getting through some rock to lay our storm structures still. But that's about it for any grading. The last pole there on Peters Creek was taken out, and they did some grading on that. The last one that had the big chunk of dirt still standing. So they got that out this week and had it graded out as well. So that's about it. Paving on Alpine Drive in Peters Creek in the last two months. They put in a turn lane on Alpine Drive. That's the road that goes into the neighborhood directly across from the school. And then they also got the left turn lane in on Peters Creek to go turn into the school. So, as soon as we get the last utility pole out down there on the road, we'll put in the right turn lane as well. So, it's already prepped. It's just, like I said, there's a utility pole in the way. We gotta get out before we can pave it. Like I said, still putting in storm structures all along the east. Some of those in Area A and D have already been tied in. So around the front of the school, all those storm structures are in. We're working on around the east and then to the south. Once we get through all that rock in the east, it'll be easy. It's all fill. So all those storm structures will go in real quick. They're also installing the eight-inch water line, which is a fire line that goes in front of the school. They got that in in the last two weeks. That's it for site work. Moving into Area D construction. That's the area we started first, towards the back of the school. This is where our building trades and HVAC shops and all that is. They continued with brick and stacked stone in those areas. So on the back of the building where the canopies are, by the end of the week, that'll be fully bricked. So when you come into the site where y'all been visiting, that one side has been, they've wrapped the corner and gone all the way down that elevation as well. And on that other side of where the brick has been, the stacked stone has been installed. I've got a picture of that. You can see it with the dark brick and the light brick together. Inside, they've continued with insulation and mechanical piping and ductwork. And then also began painting walls. So, it says CMU walls and shop ceilings. They actually painted in the law enforcement area and RTC area those drywall walls as well. So, it's coming along. It's kinda, we'll throw people off, because one side of the building, you're still putting steel up and we're painting on the far end of the building, so. And then also indeed, that we've been, started pulling wire for electrical devices as well. Area A construction, began roofing the Area A high roof last week. The Area A high roof is basically done. They popped down to the low roof this week. And as of this afternoon, before the storm hit, they had about half of it done. So, I'm sure they were scrambling when that storm was coming in to get it all watertight, because it wouldn't have been done today. Exterior metal framing and sheathing is complete in Area A as well. So they're putting on Z-Girts for our metal paneling and spray foam insulation, so that we can put the skin up on the building in Area A. It's ready to go. And then inside, we're still doing our interior metal framing. Well, most of that's complete. There's some bulkheads and stuff that we're still doing, but as far as walls and everything, that's complete. And then the interior CMU walls are ongoing, but they're about topped out on that as well. And then still continuing with our overhead and in-wall roughing for our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades. Area B construction, we wrapped up in the last couple of weeks all of our CMU bearing walls in those areas. So, the huge block operation that's been going on for months is all but complete, less some interior walls that we're still working on. But those aren't bearing walls. So that released all of our steel. Steel erection and welding are ongoing in Area B and C. And we'll have a topping out with that coming up.
Did you say something about Z-Girts?
Yes.
Everybody else in the room is like nodding their head like, "Oh yeah, Z-Girts," but I don't know.
So it's shaped like a Z. You put, it stands off of your sheathing, so that you can have something to secure your metal panel to. They're furring straps, basically.
Everybody knows that.
Build out the wall.
That's a good question.
It's a cheaper stud.
Okay.
It's not a structural stud. It's just to secure your exterior sheathing to, or your skin. So this is your building trades shop. As y'all can see, the ceilings are painted. These are all exposed ceilings in the shop area, so this is kinda what it's gonna look like in those areas as a finished product. There's no windows or anything in yet, obviously. And then I was saying earlier, this is the stacked stone in Area D. You can see below the windows, it's the dark brick, and then on the other side, it's the light. So there'll be some orange metal paneling in there as well, but that's what your skin on the building's gonna look like. They've got precast in now, too. That's not in that picture. Area A, up on the low roof, you can see the brick and the DAFFIS system. The DAFFIS is like a STUCO direct-applied finish system. That's the white that you see. The picture, it's a lot brighter than it is when you're out there. And then you can see also the Area A high roof is down. So, this picture on the left, about half of that is finished with roofing. So Area A's getting close to being somewhat dried in. Area B, you can see here on the left, this is all of our superstructure for Area B. This is the two-story section. And actually, as of today, 98% of the second story joist are hung as well. So, the bar joists for the roof that are going on to the second level are up. And then here on the right is the Area B decking. It's all tacked down and ready to keep installing penetrations for mechanical equipment, so we can get that roofed as well. Site progress, this is our eight-inch water line right in front of the building, our eight-inch fire line for the fire department support in case of anything. And then on the right is your future roadway that comes up into the site. And you can see we have all of our light pole bases set with conduit for electrical running to all those as well. In the distance, you might be able to see the paving that was done on Alpine Drive and Peters Creek. That's all I got. Does anybody have any questions? Lot going on.
Tremendous progress.
That's great. Kamal?
My turn. Since we met last night, we handed over a few phases. Like 1B on Condev, all the ceiling work, the painting, the signage. I know it's redundant, but we have to go through the phases item by item. And we're doing the punch list. We did that like a couple of weeks ago, but they're fixing a bunch of stuff with paint and mainly painting scratches. Also Phase 2A, second floor. We had all the stuff done, the ceiling, installation, the cabinets, all the inspection, VCT flooring tile. All the restrooms are done. This one we handed over also. There's a punch list items also. There are quite a bit, but they're scratches, the small items that they can take care of right away. The admin and Kudor, they're still working on that. Today, they did the new, like the carpet on the flooring. But the sprinkler system, all the overhead is done. Painting, 99.9 done. Duck system is done. The flooring is done. I don't know if you can see, but... Can you, I know it's small, but you can see the phases, like the 1A on the bottom, the 1B, 1A. I know it's redundant. We've been doing that since we came here. But just to give you an idea of the area we're working in and which one we're turning over. I hope that helps. Continuing with Condev. Is that the second page? The cafeteria and kitchen, they came a long way. All the overhead is done, ceiling, plumbing, all the overhead is done. Painting, signage. We're doing a lot of work in the kitchen, installing a lot of kitchen equipment, you know, for the food prepping stuff. All the doors installed, but some of the hardware's are missing, but we're working on that. The 3B gym area, that's, we handed over that one, and they're using, I think the school is using it for storage for now. Like I said, all the ceiling is done, all the painting is done. As far as the site work, all the parking lot is done, except maybe some, I would say 19, 20, the lights, the parking lights. But the asphalt sidewalks, truncated domes for the handicap, that's all done. I have a punch list that I started last week on that one. The second page, please. This one is Glen Cove, right next door. We also turned this over, 1B, Phase 1B. Because all the, like the ceiling is done, all the painting is done, the cabinets, the furniture. And we also created a punch list. On the admin, we also turned that in. They, some of the features, you know, they like it, but there, you know, there's complaints about the punch list, but we're taking care of that now. Phase 2A, the second floor, all the demo is done. Trenching, like on the bottom for the sanitary piping is done. All the electrical is done. 99.9 of the wiring, even the data system for the fax machine, all that is done. In the cafeteria, they're working on it now. There's a lot of work going down there, like from plumbing to the ceiling to copper piping. All the electrical, like, being done right now. What's the last page? Also the kitchen, right next to the cafeteria, a lot of work going down there, like the ceiling, piping, electrical work, HVAC system. And as far as the site, I just drew from there. They're doing a lot of tree planting. When you drive by, maybe later on, or maybe tomorrow morning, you'll see what I'm talking about. We did all the asphalt, all the striping. The parking lot is nearly complete, and we're gonna do also like a complete punch list items, the stuff that's need to be corrected. I think that's pretty much it. That, the one on the left, it shows Condev. It shows like the two windows, that's the kitchen area. It's the lower ceiling. The one next to it is the dining area. I wish I could do more pictures, but you'll show you the inside. But this one is like from a distance, the one on the right-hand side. This is the admin area. As you walk in, they're installing the main door. And this is the inside of the, you can see the ceiling. This is the dining area. We're still work in progress, but you could see like from the beginning till now, like there's a lot of work being done. That's the hallway. Today, they did the carpet on that one for Condev. This is the outside transformer, and they put this disconnect, and they're gonna switch the power maybe in 10 days. This is the promise we got from the power company. We hope it happens, so we'll see. This is the admin from the outside. And I showed some pictures of furniture being delivered, with cabinets being installed. Same thing, it's in, this one we turned over, but this is an old picture, but I like to show progress. The cabinets are installed, the floor is done, the ceiling is done. This is the new phase that they started in the, like, in the kitchen area and the cafeteria. They're doing HVAC systems, and now they're doing also framing and the machinery work. Wish we could have more pictures, but... Wish we could have more pictures, but this is what you got. Any, any questions, anything, I mean, we made a, I mean, headsway like really crazy, but, uh, it's hard to show in, in five, ten minutes.
I drove up there last week, it looks really good, it's coming along.
I see your banner like every morning when I, when I'm driving through.
As long as you don't wreck driving past, but that's a good thing.
I mean, we're making good progress, we're making good schedule work and, because whenever they needed, uh, manpower, they, they brought in and they, they got the work done.
They do, all look very good. Maybe a quick question from Mr. Kegels, uh, with, since they're being turned over in phases, is there a quality control check that's taking place? Is Skanska doing that, is our staff doing that?
Yes, sir, and Skanska and our staff are on site, uh, at all times. So we have a project manager at Glen Cove, it's, uh, Mike Kaufman, and at W E Kandev, it's, uh, Brian Dodson. And then combined with Kamal, they're doing all the, uh, quality control and going back and looking at, uh, the punch list items like you mentioned. But, but also some other things, I mean, there's some structural things that they've called along the way that they've worked with Branch to, um, get it to correct. And, uh, we should just say thank you to Branch because there was a tremendous amount of work that went on over the summer. And, uh, you know, they ultimately met all of their deadlines. Our guys were actually questioning whether they were going to be able to do that in, in the condition they were in a couple of weeks before school had to open. But they'd met every single deadline that we needed them to, uh, to meet. So, uh, just, just a public thank you to, to them for all their hard work this summer.
That has been nice that they've made the.
I mean, another thing goes by or gets installed and we don't know about, we, we check it, we make sure that it's the right thing to be good, you know what I mean? It's like, we're there.
The one thing to, uh, David's point is, uh, that we did talk about this in the very beginning stages of setting this up. Um, the, and I forget what you call it, but on the heat and air systems, you really can't.
Commissioning?
Yes, the commissioning. You can't really do that, I wouldn't think, in stages until you, you get the final product. And it's all kind of.
We are doing certain items like, uh, lighting controls, like when you walk into the room and then the light shuts off or comes on. Uh, we're commissioning that, they had like twenty-two items to take care of on Glen Cove and they're doing that now.
Well, I'm thinking more in the heat and air, just because you do sections and then it's got to all kind of tie together.
The roof, like the roof, we have the, the heating and all the equipment that's being done now.
Okay.
And whatever commissioning issues they have, they take care of it. And we, we have it, we have a system, it's called, uh, facility grid.
Okay.
You enter all the stuff that you're doing in there and they, you know what I mean, like the foremen will take care of it or the workers. And we're keeping tabs on that, we keep track of it.
The reason I ask that is because at Bird, as Mr. Kegels knows, there's maybe more than one, but there's at least one room in that school. That doesn't get heat or, or cool, I can't remember which it is. Uh, but I just, you know, once it's done, it comes together in whole, that's why I was wondering. Because we don't want to have that issue where there's a room or two that doesn't get.
I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, it's been a challenge with those for the commissioning for sure. There's a lot of meetings and discussions on how we were going to do it because some of the equipment's being reused too, right? So you can, kind of hard to commission that in conjunction with the new stuffs. So they're doing bits and pieces of it at a time right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay and.
Knock each other over head into the door.
That wasn't for Jason's R two, was it?
Item two point zero two, minor capital projects discussion, Mr. Todd Kegels.
Yes, ma'am, I just have some updates on, uh, a- a- as everybody knows, you guys approved a number of, uh, minor capital projects all at the same time. So I just wanted you to, you know, kind of let you know that we are working on all of those and kind of see the progress we've, uh, been making on them. Uh, there's a couple of things we need to discuss on specific projects, but we'll, we'll get to that. Out at, um, Bon Sac, um, we've got the carpet ordered out there, uh, working with the school just to determine a, a convenient time for installation. Uh, the good news on that one is it's about eight, uh, about eight thousand dollars under budget. Um, and then out at Herman L. Horn, we've actually finished installing the carpet, we have some pictures of that, uh, here at the end. And it was about nine thousand dollars under budget out there. Don't get too excited because, uh, I have to ask for some of that back here at the, at the end, we'll, we'll get to that. Um, out at Northside High School, uh, in, in, uh, transitioning those fax rooms, um. We've got our carpenters working out there and our electricians, uh, they've actually made quite a bit of progress, they've ordered casework now. Uh, we're waiting on that to come in and, and get it installed. So we're hoping to have all of that done by late September. They worked with the schools and the instructor out there to make sure everything they're doing, they're kind of working around each other, but it's, but it's going well. Um, Hidden Valley Middle, uh, that's all being done by, uh, a contractor for us. And they're, uh, working with the school to try to come up with different sections that they can do throughout the year. So the first one I think is going to be done over the, um, uh, election day, is going to be the first section of the building that will get done. And then, uh, from there, we see how much, um, disruption it creates and how much the school is willing to tolerate us. And we'll try to continue to go through and do that, uh, hopefully during the school year. If not, that'll be, uh, next summer. The elementary media center allotment, we've already discussed that with the principal and the media specialist, they're aware that that's available. And I think they're, uh, starting to look into exactly what they want to do with that. Uh, out at Fort Lewis, we're just waiting on a third quote. Uh, we do plan to start construction on that here in September, um, with extending the, the brick up above the cooling tower and redoing the back wall. Um, right now it looks like that one's right on, right on budget, so we should be okay there. Uh, Northside High School, I've got some pictures of this one here, uh, this is the softball, um, restrooms in, in that building there. I've got some pictures there at the end, our guys have pretty much completed the demo. I actually heard them call in the painters today and they were going to start, uh, painting some walls in there. They've still got some plumbing and electrical to do, but, um, they've got all the old flooring up and like I said, you'll see some pictures of that here in a minute. But that's, that's coming along pretty, pretty quickly, faster than we thought actually. And so we are hoping to get that done, uh, early October. Uh, K Spring Middle School and the softball field, we've contracted with the engineers out there. That is typically about an eight to twelve week process to get the construction documents and the engineering work done. Uh, there are some challenges out there, uh, we had talked about possibly moving, um, a, a utility pole out there on the edge to give us more room. That utility pole is not actually on our property, that's right in the, uh, right on the property line. So there's no opportunity to, uh, expand in that direction. And the other thing we discovered is that that softball field is, uh, on a geothermal, uh, field. So it, it has, uh, about two hundred and fifty wells, uh, under the surface there. And that's going to limit the grade work that we're going to be able to do there because you can't obviously grade down below the tops of the wells there. So, uh, our engineer is aware of that and, uh, you know, we're, we're working around that. But, um, and, until we get the engineering documents, we won't know exactly how that's going to, uh, look. But that was a little disappointing, that's going to make it, uh, much more of a challenge to, to get that the way we really like it to be in the end. Uh, out at K Spring High School, uh, the risers have been delivered, uh, and installed and assembled, that was actually quite a process. But, uh, they're all in there and they're, they're usable now, some photos of those, uh, towards the end. Uh, Hidden Valley High School and the tennis courts, we have the engineering firm under contract and they've begun work. That's again, an eight to twelve week process, so we're just waiting on the construction documents back from the, um. Uh, from the engineers and then we can, uh, you know, make grant applications and those sorts of things. I'd like to actually skip Northside High School and come back to that at the end because that's going to be a little bit of a lengthy discussion. Uh, Hidden Valley High School, the artificial turf field, I had hoped to be able to tell you that that was fully under contract today. Uh, we were working on it right up through, you know, the time I came down to this meeting, we didn't quite get there, but we do have our contractor in place. He has verbally agreed to our, uh, timelines, which is, is why it's taken this long. Because it was difficult to get people to, uh, commit to the March first, uh, time, timeline. What I want to make the board aware of on this one is that, um, we had some discussions with the school as to whether or not they'd rather, uh, wait till the summer or go ahead and try to get it in and get it done before, uh, spring sports. They had initially told us they'd prefer to wait because if we couldn't guarantee, uh, March first, they wanted to, uh, wait on that. Uh, after some further discussions and then, um, Ms. Fashani sort of rallying the troops over there, talking to the soccer coach and talking with the administrators up there. They decided it was, uh, okay to go ahead and, uh, try to press forward and, and get done by the March first deadline is, is the sort of deadline that sort of drop dead date, the absolute last day we can possibly not inconvenience the soccer team over there is March first. Uh, I just want the board to understand though, that there's no guarantees. The, um, there are, uh, financial penalties built into the contract, starting on March first. And that guarantees you that you can start getting paid on March first, but it doesn't really guarantee you that the field is going to be ready. I mean, if, if there's a, you know, a blizzard or a, you know, unreasonable weather, uh, you know, you, this is all about working the ground. When it's frozen, you can't work it, when it's wet, you can't work it, you know, winter's a, a really tough time to be doing this. So, uh, I just want to make everybody aware before we sign and, and, uh, press forward that I, I think the consensus is now to press forward and have it done by March first. And our contractor says he can do that, it's the same fellow who did, uh, Northside for us and we have a good relationship and I trust him that he'll be able to. But I just want everybody to understand that there's no guarantees. And if that field's not ready on March first, you know, it will inconvenience some, somebody somewhere, I mean, some team somewhere. Well, that's a, that's a great question and, and I've asked the school to start thinking outside the box in terms of where they might be able to do that. But you could be, you know, some of the ideas that have been tossed around is you, you'd have to find a way to get them in at Bogal. And, and if you do that, one of the other teams is probably have to be relocated. So I, I think the most obvious choice is probably the, the varsity teams take precedent and you have to move the middle school, uh, somewhere else to, to play their games. So, um, again, if it's not ready by March first, it's going to inconvenience somebody somewhere. There's just no way to, to avoid that, even with, uh, paying penalties. And I should make it clear on the penalties, the, uh, we would only apply the penalties if we felt like the contractor wasn't making a good faith effort to get it done. If, if, you know, if it's a weather-related issue for a month of, you know, snow or whatever on the ground over there, we would not hold the contractor responsible for that. Uh, you know, nobody would take that guarantee to, to do that during the winter. So, um, if you had to ask me to bet, he'll have it done by March first. I, I trust those guys and I know they'll do, they'll do everything possible. But there are no guarantees and I just want to make you aware of that now before we actually break, uh, ground. So I think if anybody objects to that, you know, now is the time to have that discussion.
Is there a cost differential, if, is it, will it be more expensive if they waited till the summertime?
I don't think so.
Yeah, so we'll just have to get a little creative if that's the case.
Yeah.
With rescheduling games or just having, because right now the middle school is using Bogal. So we'd have to shift off the middle school.
You may have to, you may have to, you know, play a game on a Saturday or, you know, that, that sort of thing. I mean, there, there will be inconveniences if the field is not ready.
Longer times or something, but.
Yeah, because it's used by four teams, it's used by, that, that field is used by JV and varsity, boys and girls. So there are, you know, four teams where the games there.
You mean for soccer?
Yes.
But what about lacrosse, is that also there?
They don't currently play their games there, they play at, uh, at Bogal.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I'm, I'm just thinking about Bogal being overly committed is what I was asking.
Oh, it's full, I mean, I, I think we looked at the schedule actually, um, you know, what the spring schedule looked like back when we first started talking about this. And it's a, it's full, you'd have to, like I say, you, somebody has to give up something, you know, that, to, to Hidden Valley to move the soccer games into, into Bogal.
And so you've discussed that with them, they know that they would have to get creative, as you said.
Yes.
So they're all aware of that.
Yeah, and the soccer coach said, you know, if we have to play even a home game somewhere else, we'll have to do that, we're okay with that, you know.
We'll call Bird for a schedule because we do it, except it's a high school and a middle school.
All right.
The practices start before the first of March?
They do, but the school can use, uh, they start in the middle of February. And so for those two weeks, the school can use the inside of the track because the prac, track practice doesn't start until March first. So the soccer team can go and practice inside the track for those, those two weeks from February fifteenth to, to March first. So that's why March first is our, our drop dead date, even though spring sports start on the February fifteenth.
So all four teams could use inside the track?
Uh, well, that's, they do, that's what they do now, they, they use that one field. So they're just sharing the same, I, I assume they do, uh, an early practice and a late practice, split the field in half and, and practice two at a time. I mean, we, we do that at Bird.
They can get that schedule because that's all we know. It, ours is, we, it's two schools, just happens to be a middle school and a high school instead of two high schools.
Yeah.
And they have to use this. We only have the one field for everything.
Yes. Anything else on, on that? So the plan is to go forward and.
Fingers crossed.
Try to get it done by March first.
What does the farmer's almanac say, says good weather?
I have no idea actually.
Does it? Yeah, that's, let's not talk about that then.
Okay, what, one last, what's the disadvantage, I guess? I mean, I, I, I get they wouldn't be able to play on it, I guess, this spring. Is it, so.
Another season on a crappy field.
If you get a better product, if you give just a little bit more time, that's all I was wondering. Is there any chance we don't get a good product if we rush it?
Uh, I don't think so, we have guarantees on, um, you know, if you look at the length of time it took to do Northside and the length of time that we have between now and spring sports, there's plenty of time. Uh, but we have some engineering considerations that we didn't have at, uh, Northside because it was already set up, it already had the concrete curbs in place. And, uh, you know, it was artificial turf ready to an extent. So there, this field isn't, it's just a, you know, a, a field, there, there's no surrounding structure, so all that has to be built this time. Uh, but I, I don't, I'm not concerned about the quality of the product at the end. And we have, uh, things like eight-year warranty on the seams, so, uh, which is really what you, you know, concerned about with artificial turf. So, um, I, I'm not concerned that it'll be a, a lesser quality product, only, uh, whether or not it's going to be ready on March first.
I recall correctly, they were a little bit delayed on Northside and that was a summertime project.
That's right, and, and that they met their, they met their, you know, we, their drop dead date, there was the start of football season. And they met that deadline and got it done and were ready to go at the, at the start of football season. So, um, it, it was a little bit later than they originally said, but the date that they had given us was a month or two before football season. So it, um, you know, ultimately it met our needs. That, that contract did not have financial penalties.
Well, I think that had something to do with some drainage, didn't it? A pipe or something under there, they weren't aware of and had to report it.
That's right, the, the existing drainage was not sufficient and had to be, uh, dug up and, uh, additional drainage had to be installed.
So with this being, where's that, probably no pipes or anything under it, I wouldn't think.
That's right. Yep.
Also, you gotta worry about freezing, I wonder if they can lay it while it's freezing.
I mean, if that's something the board needs to discuss, then, uh, you know, if, if you feel like you need to take action on it, now's the time to do that. Because we're, we're signing the contract, uh, tomorrow probably.
Your school, Cheryl.
Yeah, I want to get it done, that's why I called a meeting with Mr. Whitlow and Mr. Weaver and the coach. Just want to make sure you guys are aware, this is what's possibly happened. The coach was just fine with it, you know.
No issue with quality and, and they can work out the schedule, I mean, I, I guess just let's go with it.
Okay, uh, let's see, that was the turf. Uh, okay, so here's, here's the, the bad news. Uh, there's good news on the carpet projects earlier, uh, on the other slide, this is the bad news on this one. Uh, Northside High School, we are done putting carpet in the band room over there. That one was about ten thousand dollars over budget. So we're going to return about seventeen thousand on the other two carpet projects that were under budget and then ask that, uh, ten thousand of that be, uh, reallocated back to the project at Northside Middle just to cover the, uh, over budget. So still net on the carpet projects were seven thousand under budget, but that one, uh, was over budget. And I will say, we probably could have gotten that, uh, less expensive had we been willing to wait, but we needed to get that one done before, um, before school started. So it was a little more expensive to.
Why'd you go over budget on that? And not, why would you go over budget on that and not the others?
Why would we go over budget?
Yeah, what, what caused that one to go over budget, where the other ones?
Well, this one, it, the, we based that budget on what it cost to carpet the band room at, uh, Northside High School. Uh, the structure is a little bit different at Northside Middle, so the installation cost was significantly higher. And that's why that one was, you know, over what we thought it would cost. And, and then we probably could have bid it out and got a little bit of a better price, but we wanted to get it done before, uh, school opened up. And we remember when these projects were approved in order to get it done before school opened up, we had to take our, our contract price, which is typically a little more expensive.
You don't have a problem with that, do you? Going over budget on something?
Not ideal, but, uh.
Just want to make sure.
Tried to get it done and didn't get it done.
You certainly bring it up a lot, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we're good. Well, like I said, we're, there's an offset there, we're, we're under seventeen on the other and ten over on that, so, you know, net, we're, we're still good, uh, for now. Uh, K Spring High School, the, the snack bar, that's all. Uh, K Spring High School, the, the snack bar, that's all being done after football season, so we haven't actually done anything with that one, other than go over there. And, uh, look, we do need to meet with, uh, stakeholders, uh, at some time in the future, so we can start getting some things ordered. Glenver Middle School, we've got the 250 chairs in. They were actually less expensive than we, uh, thought they were going to be, so we're a little under budget on that one as well. Uh, Glenver Elementary School is, um, let's see, I just talked to him about that one today. We have the, I think we're waiting on the third quote there, but even with the most expensive, or the least expensive of the two quotes that we have, we're going to be significantly under budget on that one. I think about $15,000 under, uh, the budget there. So, um, they picked out their flooring, and we're just waiting on that third quote, so we can, uh, get it ordered and then, and then get it installed. Uh, staff restrooms, we are, um, planning to contract, I talked to, actually, Michael Mascheri with RMM. They did, uh, current major construction projects. They're doing the plans for, uh, the bathrooms out there at Glenver that we're going to add, and so they're eight to 12 weeks out on the, uh, architecture and engineering work, and then we'll get, uh, started on, on that one. So, if we could come back to Northside High School and the stadium lights there, uh, we based the budget for that one on William Bird Hive. We're putting in exactly the same system that we did out there, a 50-foot candle LED system. That system cost us about $250,000. So, we set the budget at 300 to allow for some, uh, contingency. Well, Northside has some unique, uh, electrical challenges. So, that project is minimum going to cost about $317,000, and really, what I would recommend is going to be the $370,000 option. And, and here's the difference. They could go in and install, um, new LED stadium lighting and leave the current poles and, uh, fixtures in place, and they can do that for $317,000. And that's just the result of the increase in the cost of copper and the, um, uh, escalation in price for the, for the LED systems in the last, uh, year and a half, two years since we, since we installed, uh, out at Bird. Now, Northside's electrical is a complete mess in terms of the, uh, stadium lights out there. It's where it's been, uh, for the last 25 years. They've just gone and fed everything that's out there. It's the press boxes, the baseball buildings, all, all of the irrigation system that was out there. Everything's fed off those light poles. So, if you take down the current poles, you have to rewire all that stuff, and that's where the extra, uh, you know, $50,000 or $60,000 comes in between the, the, the 317 to the 370. Our philosophy since, you know, I took this role three years ago, has been to leave the school system in better shape than we, than we found it, so that when we retire in a few years, uh, we don't leave long-term problems and those sorts of things for the people that, that come behind us. The $317,000 would leave a lot of, uh, things in place that would still need to be fixed at some point in the future, in addition to not looking very good, because you're going to have the new light poles set off from the existing light poles with, you know, the old poles still in place, the old rusty poles and the fixtures still in place. Now, it won't affect the new LED lights. They're not going in exactly the same place anyway, and you'll still get the same field lighting if you do the cheaper option, but you won't have corrected any, uh, of the existing problems out there. So, my recommendation to the board would be to, um, you know, bite the bullet, spend the extra $70,000 now, and, um, and do keep in mind that, that does not include any contingency. Our contingency was from the 250 to the 300, so that's already well beyond, you know, what we had planned, uh, for contingency. But that would still be my recommendation to the boards, knowing the big picture and the, and the, you know, financial position that, that we're in. Still my recommendation that we, uh, do the $370,000 option.
All ears on this one.
Well, I think with the age of the wiring, I mean, that could be an issue down the road, right?
Absolutely.
And then that, and obviously, it's going to cost more five years from now than it is today. We see that with just a couple of years and the difference in the materials now with copper, so my recommendation would be to go ahead if we can do it. I mean, I know that you've got some savings in some of these projects, even though we don't have everything complete, but do you have a figure on what we have in savings thus far?
Uh, in terms of being under budget? Uh, no, I didn't add them all together. Um, and I'd have to do mental math real quick, but it's not anywhere near enough to address the 70,000, even if we took, um... We might have $30,000 net so far that, that we're under. What do you think, Mr. Linden?
I'd agree with Mr. Hudson in that, uh, it's not going to get any cheaper in three years, or five years, or eight years, or whenever we may need to make those other repairs. A $53,000 difference between 317 and 370.
No big deal.
We get one opportunity to do it right, let's do it right.
Yeah, there you go. Attaboy. You, you all did leave some money in minor capital, so you can cover the, uh, $70,000 cost there.
What did we leave, 250?
Something like that.
It was really 250. Yeah, I...
No problem spending that on these lights, huh? From 250 to 370? You're o, you're okay with that?
Well, the original was 300, right?
No, 250.
The original budget was 300.
Okay.
250 is what we spent on it, but...
How long did you do that to support brands?
But we budgeted, but you did have a budget of 300. I mean, that's what we thought it was going to cost.
The budget was 300, yes, ma'am.
Linden, on the other hand...
Yeah, I just can't see going to all that extent and leaving the old wiring, and then we have a problem a year from now, two years from now. And I don't, I'm not an electrician, but what happens is, you know, faulty wiring causes some damage to the new lighting that we put in.
Makes no sense at all. It's absolutely the right thing to do.
It's the right thing to do.
And maybe, uh, since it's in Linden's backyard, he'll be okay with it. So, let's move forward with it and do it the right way.
I don't think we have a whole lot of choice. The 317 or the 370. It just doesn't make any sense to not fix all that stuff now.
Contingency and everything, that's wild. I'm good with it.
Yeah, me too. I think you have to get it done.
I, I didn't hear you. Was that from me?
I said, "No, we have to get it done."
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Now, we are, we're working with a couple of other contractors as well, to see if we can get a better price, but these folks were so much less expensive than the other two vendors, uh, when we did Bird. I, it's not likely that it will be any less than this, but we are exploring those options, just so, just so, you know. It won't be more than 370. So, uh, what I would recommend, then, if, if there's general consensus that we're going to do that, is that we put that on the, uh, the 70, the additional $70,000, uh, on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
I'm good with it. Even though you didn't support anything at Bird, I'm good with that.
So, with the additional savings, like you were saying, 30 or 40,000, I mean, you just hold on to that for these other projects until we're finished, and...
Yeah, it doesn't get returned until the projects are finished and the bill's paid. And then, once the bill is, bill is paid, we close the project, and then it'll automatically go back into minor capital.
And put it back into where we're taking it out of. Okay.
It's absolutely the right thing to do.
Uh, okay, so we just have some photos we want to look at. Uh, that's the carpet out at Horn, and the, uh, that's the library. We've got the music room. Looks fantastic out there. I think they're, they're super excited about the way it came out. It's out at Northside. The guys, like I said, this is, I don't know, just a week or so ago, but they had done the demo. The fixtures are still in there at this point. They'll all be new. The hand dryers will be new. The walls will be new. They'll look, everything in here will look brand new. I just wanted you to see that they've been over there working, and they've made quite a bit of progress over there. Uh, the forum chairs out at Glenver Middle, the stuff has all our new chairs, and she's , uh, super excited about the way it looks and how everything turned out, and they've, um, you know, they're already using those. You've got the choir risers out at, uh, K Spring High School, and again, those are installed and, uh, ready for use. So, um, progress on all your, uh, projects. And that's the, um, the new carpet out at, um, out at Northside Middle. That brings us to our next agenda item, unless you have questions about any of those projects.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
You're always on top of it, everyone.
Thank you.
Item 2.03, surplus property discussion, Mr. Todd Cagles.
Uh, if you recall, we had a, a presentation from, uh, a gentleman who was working on behalf of, uh, a developer, uh, and they would like to purchase these two, uh, pieces of property that we own off of Ranch Pass Drive over there at K Spring Middle School. They total about .4 acres. If there is no objection to, um, the sale of that property, and I don't believe there was when we discussed this before, then the first step of that would be to designate the property as surplus. So, I would recommend that the board put this on the consent agenda for the next meeting. Uh, once they're designated as surplus, then we can move forward with the public hearing, gathering, and offer. We actually already have an appraisal and an offer, um, matching the appraisal on these, on these two parcels, so, um, if there was an agreement, it's just a matter of formality. We have to designate them as surplus is the first step. Any objections?
Nope.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
They'll have to approve that at the next meeting as consent?
Yes, sir. I mean, I guess you could take action on it now, if you wanted to do that, but...
We can wait, too.
Will they actually be put on the market, or would they be, those properties, will we have that option later?
Uh, just like we did with the, um, piece of property over at Penn Forest, that wasn't the plan. This is where, uh, uh, you know, a citizen has come to us to make that purchase. Uh, that certainly could be an option if you wanted. It just extends the process, but certainly, if you wanted to, uh, list it and then see if we could get, uh, you know, maybe more money for it, um, that would certainly be a pro, uh, uh, you know, an opportunity to do that if you want. That is not the current plan, though. So, if we, if, if that's what we want to do, you guys just need to tell me we want to do that, and we'll certainly make that happen.
Can we discuss that enclosed?
Yes.
To just refresh my memory on that? I don't know if I, I mean, I remember us discussing it, but I don't remember us getting to the...
Yes, sir. And, and I believe I uploaded the appraisal and the, um, the appraisal and the offer, the letter of intent on those two in, uh, the administrative content that you have access to on Board Docs. If I didn't, I can certainly send you all a, a copy of that, and we can discuss those in closed session.
Either way, the first step would be to go ahead and declare the surplus.
Declare.
You still have time later to decide whether or not to accept the offer or to throw it on the market.
Yep.
So, it still goes on consent for that piece?
For this piece, right. And then you could, uh, let's say, at your September 18th meeting, enclosed, discuss the, as, under real estate.
That's fine. I'd like to just remember exactly where we're at with that, because...
Yes, so we're not accepting the offer right now, we're just as a date to get a surplus.
Okay.
Thank you. Item 2.04, request approval of CTE textbook adoption, Mr. Mark Jones.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me this. Over the past several months, CTE Department has established, um, several textbook adoption committees to, uh, look at some of our aging, um, instructional resources, and, uh, the committees have come together and recommended the following textbooks for adoption. And you'll see here, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about those. And if there are no questions, and, um, if you approve that, we would, we would request that they be placed on the consent agenda at the next school board meeting for approval.
Do you have questions?
Did the, did the instructors or teachers look at those books?
Yes, yeah, they were part of the committee for all of them.
Are we good? All right. Item 2.05, request approval to surplus instructional materials, Mr. Mark Jones.
In a related topic, uh, the instructional department has used instructional resources that are out of adoption, no longer will be used by the school system. They include miscellaneous instructional resources that need to be designated as surplus. Uh, these instructional resources will be sold, donated, or disposed, and that order is needed. Uh, the proceeds from any sales will go back to the Instructional Resources Fund. I'd like to request that that be also placed on consent agenda, that these items be surplused, and we can help JJ clear out the warehouse.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 2.06, request approval of long-term use of facilities contract, Ms. Tammy Newcomb.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, today, we bring forward a request for approval of a long-term facility application for the Runetown Community Band. This group is made up of members of our own music department, as well as other community members. Their concerts are open to the public at no charge, creating a wonderful opportunity to connect our schools with the wider community through music. In accordance with Policy 8.01, this activity falls under Class B. Facility rental fees are waived, however, charges for utilities, site supervisors, and custodians will be, um, applied as required. So, we request respectfully the board's approval of this long-term facility application. And I did put it in, um, information, I think, for you to see it under administration.
These are all our kids, right?
It's not kids, it's actually adults and some alumni that have been in the band.
So, they're none, none of our kids, it's just...
Um, I, at times, I think there could be a possibility. I can't say forever, but they've done this for years, and it came across my desk, and we looked at it, and, um, the utilities, we wanted to make sure we're on there, and then I wanted to make sure that you had seen it, and...
Let me rephrase it, it's all Runetown County citizens?
I believe so.
Not necessarily. I mean, it's, it's Runetown, it's a Runetown Valley Community Bands. This is a...
Oh, okay.
Facility use request, just like we, you know, do for churches and so forth.
Well, the reason I was...
But a lot of them are our music directors who participate.
Well, the reason I was suggesting is, so you're saying we would charge for the electricity and some of that?
Utilities, and that would, that's what we would do for any Class B that came, that comes through under our policy.
So, if it were Runetown County citizens, I was going to say, let's, you know, they pay taxes, let's cut them a break, but...
Well, in, in, in Class B, we sort of are, because we're not charging for the auditorium.
Facility, right.
Facility. So, it's just utilities with the payment.
And which facility is that?
Penn Valley High School.
Okay.
It has been at K Spring High School before, but the past few years, it's been at Penn It has been at Case Ring High School before, but the past few years it's been at New Valley High School. So I just believe it has to be on consent agenda next time.
Everybody go with it?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Item two point zero seven, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five preliminary year-end results, Ms. Susan Peterson.
Yeah, I can't. Sorry, it's taking me a second to get ready. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next several items, I do have a PowerPoint that I'll have uploaded to board docs after the meeting. I've been working on it up until now. So I do want to go ahead and give you preliminary look at what the general fund surplus is expected to look like at year end. Keep in mind, it is only September fourth, our auditors won't come in until November. We've taken care of most of our audit entries. I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of them, we're just doing some cleanup for annual school reporting at this point. And then if there are any invoices that come in that are significant, we will accrue them back and so that would affect our bottom line. But for right now, on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see the preliminary activity. We have revenue listed first and then the expenditure savings and then the total carryover amount. Under revenue, we do have a negative six hundred and sixty-two, one ninety-five, and that's directly related to less ADM than what we budgeted. We have a little more in federal funds from Medicaid and E-Rate. Local revenue, the eight twelve, eight sixty-nine, that is an additional amount the county transferred to us. They received a premium on the bonds for RCCTC. This freed up other cash that they were able to set aside for the CSA. CSA is in a negative position right now. And so they're trying to do everything they can to build up the fund balance in CSA. So they gave us an additional eight twelve, eight sixty-nine, and then they took it back out of our coffers. And so it's a wash at the end of the day, but it is a transaction that does show up through our books. And then some other local revenue went down. So revenue ended up negative six thousand five hundred and seventy-seven, a little bit to the, to the not so good. On the expenditure side, so one thing I will say, probably during the budget time, I was reviewing the twenty-five payroll laps and taking a look at what it would need to cover, right? Most of that, we did estimate payroll laps to be about three million at the time, but we, and we estimated a revenue deficit to be six, sixty, so we were very close to the loss going up here. We estimated the maximum amount for PTO payouts and that was over seven hundred thousand. We also estimated over eight hundred thousand for electricity. And then the AED legislature that came down the pike. And so we were estimating about two point two million of cost overruns that we were gonna have to cover with payroll laps. So the personnel savings is about what we expected it to be, it's three point three million there. When we knew we were having an issue with the health insurance fund and all these other costs, Dr. Nicely put us on, the department's on a spending freeze. And so they did a very nice job of covering these overages and leaving, leaving three hundred and sixty-nine thousand on the table. So that's why, you know, maybe six months ago, I was showing we might be in a much worse position, why we are at a better position than, than what I was planning. And then we have the emergency contingencies, two million, that just gets carried over. We built that up many years ago using surplus and we just carry it over year after year. So overall, our general fund carryover will be five point six million. On the right-hand side is how we would request for it to be re-appropriated back to us because we do have to take that to the board of supervisors. For our policy, two million comes off the top for the emergency contingency. The encumbrances that are on the books at June thirtieth equate to two hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. They would come off the, the next amount. Then the policy says fifty percent of what is left over goes into major capital. The other fifty percent can go to major capital, minor capital, CSA, CMP, fleet or technology. So bigger one-time spending. I have been made aware that the county may ask for additional funding from surplus for CSA. The maximum amount of that they have thrown out there is eight fifty, they're thinking up to that amount. And so whatever is left over would go to that and then we would drop the remaining eight sixty-one into the minor capital fund. So that's kind of the summary of what our general fund carryover would look like and. And I, and I'll warn you, what Dr. Nicely just handed out is not what I'm showing you right now. I've made additional changes to the PowerPoint.
Just edit as you need to do.
Yes.
That's what I had before the meeting, so.
That's why I haven't sent it out yet or printed it.
Is there anything different on this page?
The numbers match up.
They, they're the same, I reordered them.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, you may not be able to answer them today and if I can get back with me. One I'd like to put out, point out, the personnel savings, I know that we made some hard decisions earlier and that attributes to the personnel savings. So I'd like to give credit to the board for that. That was tough, but obviously it's paying off here. One thing, insurance, because that's still on the back of my mind, right? Like, I don't want that hitting us again and I don't want our employees to have to foot that bill. So how are we looking? Maybe you can give us a report here, I know we're kind of early in.
Do you want me to jump to that slide or do y'all want to finish with these questions?
Okay, you've already got it. Okay, that was one question. And then also, and this is a total separate one, bonds, you know, I know with new projects and stuff like that, I would love to know how much we're paying in bonds currently every year and then, you know, how that would be added later on. You don't have to answer that now.
Our portion or the county's portion?
Our portion itself.
So we pay four point one million to the county for debt service every year.
Four point one million?
Mm-hmm.
And is that gonna change with the new projects or is that already?
No, that's already built in.
That's already built in.
What is gonna change is we have, we fund future capital. That amount that goes into future capital will be increasing a half million every year. So I think that's it, maybe three point eight right now and it'll go up a half a million. It will be an add on every budget request for the foreseeable future.
So theoretically, the more surplus, the more money that can be put county-side and our side would reduce the amount that we would have to pay on the bonds every year? If we're paying off debt quicker than?
We're not paying, we're paying it off in accordance with the schedule.
Right, but is there a way to pay it off quicker?
I don't think so. That's really a question for the county and right now I think they're doing everything they can to build up the CSA fund. They're in such a negative position with that, I don't think they have the opportunity to pay additional debt early.
That's something I'll reach out to our counterparts on the board supervisors and ask. Because that does concern me over time, it, it grows, right? And that affects our budget because we're having to pay again four point one million dollars every year.
Certainly, and that was part of the MOU that we signed.
Right, and I'm fine with it, I'm just saying that, you know, that's something that we gotta look at in the future if we can maybe together, work together to try to pay that down quicker.
Sure.
With, with less spending in other areas.
Definitely.
The emergency contingency fund you said was established, how long ago?
I would say more than twelve years ago.
And was it at two million then?
We, we put in an amount each year, we built up to it, we didn't put in two million at one time.
I'm just curious, I mean, we saw the effects of, of staying at the ten, ten, ten with the county and the revenue sharing agreement. Just wondering whether or not two million is enough in that contingency fund. When we see the prices of everything going up, whether it's healthcare or construction or everything else, do we, we don't want to get copy ninety-eight ball spin at an, at an amount that may not cover what we need to.
Well, we can look at that, that's actually in the county's financial policy at two million. But we, I can speak with them and see if they're interested in, in changing that level amount as well.
Just a follow-up, we know what the ten, ten, ten did to us.
When we made our adjustments, Dr. Nicely, in for personnel, was that, correct me?
You're talking about the like positions that were eliminated and so forth?
Was that one, making a one point nine million?
Nine hundred thousand.
It was nine hundred, I thought it was one point nine. No, all right, and when was that, that was for July one?
It was effective for this current fiscal year.
Budget year, right. So really none of that savings was in the number you're giving us here, other than the hiring freeze, right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as like departmental savings and so forth, I mean, some of that, you know, we did kind of, you know, cut off some major spending there while the health and insurance reserves were in jeopardy and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, the, like, some of the savings might be a little higher than normal because of those kinds of things, but I don't think it's dramatically different.
So I guess, yeah, so I guess to my point, we were at a five point six surplus, is that, is that correct?
Including the two million?
Yeah, well, that's always included.
Right, right, right.
So five point six, and then we put two million during the year into the emergency fund, right?
Well, that just kind of sits there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about that emergency, I'm talking about.
He's about the health reserves.
Health insurance.
Oh, correct.
So we took two million during the year and threw that in there. And then we calculated another nine hundred thousand for this current year, right? And we don't even know what we lost in the estimated to actual revenue for the year, right? Where we, we don't get that piece. You've got estimated to actual.
Not the six thousand five hundred and seventy-seven, that's the true revenue for general fund?
No, 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 I'm sorry, not your, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Not your actual, I'm talking about county where we estimate to begin the year, they, they estimate the revenue.
Oh.
They're gonna give us to the actual, what it actually ended up being for the year. We never get that made up. So if you added that in, so we're at like eight and a half million dollar surplus this year. That's essentially what, where we were at. So I just, just wanted to point that out. So going into the planning for the new budget year, that, that we recognize that. So if you wanted to throw another half million into emergency contingency, my feeling is we're, there's nothing changed, we've actually tightened our belts going into the next year. So there should be some, some revenue there that we should be able to use or, or calculate into certain items.
Well, and to your point, you know, there's been some accusations from some folks that, you know, we spend too much money, right? But if you look at the results of the education, like, Dr. Nicely, you just put something out the other day in an email, was it sixth and seventh or?
Yeah, Mr. Williams is actually gonna go over that, we actually improved in our SOL scores results for this past year in terms of our state rankings.
Sixth and seventh in the state, right? Not just in the valley, but in the state. And then here we are with, like you said, you add two million to that, that we had to add to insurance for unforeseen reasons, that's nobody's fault.
That's right.
You know, that, we couldn't foresee that to come. I don't like bragging on our, you know, myself or anybody else, but at the end of the day, I feel like we've done a pretty good job. So anybody that wants to make a comment that we spend too much money, they need to come in here and really look at the numbers and see the results before they make outlandish statements like that. And I would bring that to the person I'm talking about and tell them face to face, hey, come here and let me show you.
Yep.
You know, this is good work from our staff, thank you, Susan. Thank you to all the department directors for your parts, because I feel like a lot of times we don't, you know, we don't get what we deserve.
You're exactly right.
And to your point before, like you have spoke many times before, and it's taken a little while to understand all of this because obviously there's a lot of moving parts to the budget. We get our share from the county based off of their projected revenue, right? But if they go way over in revenue, we don't get anything from that. So that's a whole lot of money sitting there and I think some people are under the illusion that we get a, was it fifty? What was the percentage that we get from county revenue?
It's about forty-one percent.
Forty-one, forty-two.
It used to be forty-two.
Right, so then some people would make a statement that, oh, you know, there's people concerned about how much money the schools are getting. Well, that's a false statement because it's not forty-one percent of the entire county revenue, it's forty-one percent of the projected revenue. Now granted, some people would say, oh, well, if we over-project, we're not gonna ask you for the money back. I would ask, when is the last time it has ever been over-projected? To my knowledge, it hasn't, right? So this is just, to me, proof that we're doing a lot of good things here and the results, you can't take it away from us because again, sixth and seventh, if you want to judge us based off of education, we're doing a great job. And I just want to thank everybody in the room for that.
And that's a good, a good point. We used to have, and we may have updated that a year or two ago, but I, I don't think, I don't think we promote that enough. How, I mean, again, it's kind of like thumping your chest, but how good, you know, first in the region, in the NICO rate, you know, we're first in the region, eleventh in the state, SOL scores, you know, just mentioned about that. I don't know, Chuck, you're the public, public relations guy.
That's the lead story on the website right now.
Well, our website needs to be getting into mainstream media and, and not that they're gonna run with it a whole lot, but I think that's who needs to hear this, it, it needs to be, we need to, we need to promote that. We need to thump our chest. And to, to Mr. Hudson's point, I think we do it with less dollars than most of our, our friends in the state. And that's, you know, that's what people need to understand, is that, you know, we'll, we'll hear something about, well, you spent this on a field, you know? But look at what we're doing with the dollars we have and the results we're obtaining. That, that bubble chart we had, again, it's been eight or nine years ago since we, we did that particular one, but we were getting more out of our students with less dollars spent per student. And it's still the same way, it's nothing different, we just, I don't think we promote that enough and, and explain that to our citizens, explain that to our counterparts on the board supervisors, our, our citizens in general. That is an accomplishment that is worth being proud of. I'm proud, you know, I'm more proud of being on the Run-up County School Board, not, not because of anything I've done or, or we, but the staff and, and what this group accomplishes year in and year out and the results we get from our students, it's amazing. I think if anybody looks into it, it's amazing. So, you know, I just bring that up because, well, we should have some dollars going into this budget season that, you know, again, I, I think we left some dollars on the table to, to give teachers another percent maybe. And we, you know, we don't want to run the well dry, but I'm just saying, you know, there's positive energy going into this year that we've done a really good job and I think we do, we're very conservative and we, and we do a good job, I think, with our finances and, and a lot of that's due to Ms. Peterson and, and the group. And I know we give you a hard time in a lot of instances, but it's not giving you a hard time, it's just trying to get everything we can out of the budget. So thank you and, and as Mr. Hudson said, I think the board has done a nice job and, and staff is absolutely phenomenal. So, you know, we're, we're getting the results, you know? You can be proud when you send your kids to a Run-up County public school that they're getting, I don't even know if bang for your buck is the right word, but you're getting everything you can get out of a public school, I think. And we're doing a fabulous job. And it's a reason to tout public schools and promote public schools. I'm tired of preaching to somebody else.
You know, Tim, if you did an analysis of how much they spend in NOVA compared to what we spend and the results that they get, we don't come close to spending that amount of money that they get and they don't get the results that we get.
That's right.
So it's an inverse relationship. So I do have a question for Susan, the CSA contribution, have we been making contributions to that in the past or is this the first time that we're doing that?
So we've done it one other time from year surplus. So this is not unprecedented. Every year during the, the budgeting process, part of the revenue sharing agreement, they have the CSA amount in there. They always give us that and they always take it back. And so we built that into the budget as part of the process.
Is it a percentage or is it just a raw number?
It's a hard number. It's an amount that they, it's equal to their contribution. So they basically take the total contribution that goes into CSA and split it in half.
So in essence, we contribute to it every year as part of the budget process, you know, this will be, and as I actually said, this has happened maybe like once before, this is above and beyond what we normally contribute. So just because of the, the deficits that they're running.
Okay, because I remember we put twice as much in our budget as we did before, is that what that number's reflecting?
So this, this would be over and above.
That's above that number.
What we already put in the budget, yeah.
Because what do we put in the budget to start? Was it like, do you remember what the number was?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
It was pretty high.
Yeah.
It was almost double.
Which is why, of course, we're doing that feasibility study to look at, you know, maybe be able to start our own public day school to try to offset those costs that we're currently, you know, spending for the private day schools, which is a big chunk of that.
It's astronomical.
What I was gonna say is, for the public's information, the CSA is an alternative education program for kids that need that.
It's, it's that and a lot more stuff, but yeah, that's a lot of that, it's the private day schools, you're, yeah.
And one thing I think you have to look at, that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that's also a way to control our, our minor capital spending. I'm not saying that we don't need to contribute to that, that's a big piece.
I think you're right.
But that half is basically, if you look at what we break down between our, usually it's fifty percent major capital, minor capital, that's a piece that they're pulling out to control minor capital spending. So make no bones about it, that's part of, and whatever, but that's, I just want you to understand, that's, that's what's happening.
It's a big chunk of money.
Yeah.
I mean, it's no doubt. And we've already budgeted for it, so it's kind of surprising to me, but I wish we had that school built now and we could control for that. We don't.
If I made a sad on to what you were saying earlier about, you know, the great job that Run-up County Public Schools does, that, you know, our theme this year, as we celebrated during convocations, all that teamwork, right? And it really does take everybody, all of our teachers, our nutrition staff, you know, custodians, bus drivers, all our instructional staff, our teachers, our counselors, everybody up here. It really is everybody doing that together and I appreciate when, you know, board members, you know, celebrate that because there is so much to be proud of. This is one of the, you know, best school divisions out of a hundred and thirty-one in, in Virginia and, and you ought to be proud of it, so I appreciate that.
It's the staff, it's the staff. I mean, it's a direct reflection of our staff.
Yeah, we, we, we know what we're doing and they know what they're doing.
Yeah, and I just want to add on though, it, it's not only the staff, the teachers, it's the parents who put in the work also and the students, and the students are putting in the work, so.
That's right.
So it, it's.
It all ties together.
It all ties together, you can't have one without the other.
Would it be a possibility to, to take that eight fifty and cut it in half, four twenty-five from minor and four twenty-five for major capital? Or is that not an option?
Our policy specifically says fifty percent to major capital.
But it also says fifty percent to minor capital, right?
No, it says, I'll read it, we're a one, I brought that in.
Please do, yeah.
Well, you can, you, you can use minor for major but not major for minor, correct?
It says fif, it says, it talks about the emergency contingency and then it talks about encumbrances. And number three, fifty percent will be allocated to major capital. Number four, fifty percent will be allocated for one or more of the following purposes. Major capital, minor capital, capital maintenance program, safety and security, fleet replacements, technology replacements or Comprehensive Services Act.
I give them credit.
So that's, that's where our board are policy.
It's a slick move.
That's in our policy?
That is in our policy, it is also mirrored in the county's financial policy as well.
When did we make that particular part of the policy? Because CSA wasn't a part originally.
It was not, it was probably back when they asked us to donate the additional.
What, this year?
It was probably five or six years ago.
Okay. Slick move, I'm telling you.
I will say, so the CSA contribution of eight fifty, if. Um, I will say, so the CSA contribution of eight fifty, if we have to do that, the county will give up part of theirs as well of the same e- equal amount, so they're not going to ask us to do something that they're not going to do as well. And it may not even be that much. It all depends on how their books fall out. They do have certain reserve balances that they have to keep in each of their funds per their own financial policy, and all of those balances are reflected in their bonding, um, bond ratings. Uh, so they try and keep the highest bond ratings that they can, so that's kind of the purpose of, of trying to, uh, shore up their CSA fund. Because it, the last time, um, I saw a report from them, it was in the negative, and it was going to close the year.
And when will we know what that number will be?
Um, I think, uh, Ms. Gerhardt is taking, uh, her preliminary, preliminary numbers, September twenty-third, to her board. Um, so probably after that date.
So you get with them to kind of see how they want us to maneuver that money, and then, uh, is this the first year we've had? I don't remember us putting in the CSA out of minor capital.
Um, we have contributed to CSA once before.
Okay.
I, I can give you, I'll have to go back and do research to let you know.
And what year was that?
Yeah.
I, I'll have to let you know what year.
Yeah, if you go back and look.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's been several years, and it might have been during twenty twenty, it might have been around the COVID-ish time, which might be why my brain's not, a lot was going on then.
Sorry for asking questions before you get to the slide. Got to get it out while it's on my mind, right?
Are y'all?
Yeah.
Good with your end then? All right, so then, um.
Item two point zero eight, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget update, Ms. Susan Peterson.
All right, um, so we'll do two things in here. First, I'm going to take a look at net payroll laps, and then we're going to get to Dr. Dr. Hudson's, Mr. Hudson's, um, question on health insurance. So first, um, I do want to let you know, so this is kind of what I showed you, uh, for the twenty-five year, about six months ago, where we're sitting with net payroll laps. I'm not looking at departmental expenditures or anything else at this point. Um, right now, when we run, uh, payroll, we do look to have a two point nine million dollar overall payroll laps. This is only one point seven four percent of the total payroll budget. Um, this is probably about where I'm comfortable. Uh, to go much lower than this makes us uncomfortable. Uh, the, the need for the payroll laps to be about this level is we, as a school division, are required to, uh, fill certain positions. If we get a, a student with high special needs that needs to have a one-on-one aide, we have to hire that person. And so we have the lapse so that we can hire that aide for that student. This is a mandate that is non-negotiable, um, and, and Dr. Harmon is all about that very well. And so this is kind of, uh, just to ensure that we can cover any new students that come into, um, our school regardless of the situation, right? Um, so out of this, uh, right now, we are looking at having a revenue deficit. Um, the ADM was, I think, down by a little bit. The enrollment was down a little bit this year. I think this is going to go up. I don't think we're going to have a problem because CSA isn't included in the numbers and CISA is not included in numbers. And so once you add and subtract all of these out, I think our enrollment's going to be closer. We may still miss the mark a little bit, but I don't think it's going to be as much as we did this current year. Um, and so I, I do see, uh, enrollment maybe a little bit lower. Um, at the last work session, um, Dr. Saltis asked to have a position back, uh, that he removed from the budget, and after having additional, um, consideration and discussions with the operations team, um, I think they are really wanting to add back a carpenter position. And so I do think the carpenter position would be about seventy thousand dollars. Um, and I think that if the school board, uh, would want to go ahead and do that, um, I think that would be coverable through payroll laps.
Just as a reminder, if, when Todd went over all the, or Mr. Kegels went over all the projects, our carpenters are doing a lot of the work. So in order to get the, the project done in a timely manner and keep up with everything else, I really do feel like he needs a carpenter.
I, I think, isn't it, they had four carpenters, we took them down to three, and so now they don't have two teams of two, they have.
Yes, ma'am.
A, a team of three or one team of one and one team of two.
Right.
And so that's a.
Dr. Saltis fault.
Yeah, it was, I apologize. Poor budgeting on my part.
So, so can you, I don't understand, is this two months of payroll laps? Is that, I don't understand exactly.
So the payroll laps realized to eight twenty-nine, the one point two million in the negative, that's just a mathematical number because the open positions, the eight twenty-nine, the four point two million, that is that, if we add up every open position, that's how much laps we have in the open positions. But when we run the budget numbers, we actually have two point nine million. So it has to do, um, just with the timing of the contract with teachers coming on, right? Because July, the teachers aren't here at all, and so I think it's just timing with that. And so I think the negative is going to go away. Um, I'm not worried about that at all. At, at the end of the day, the two point nine is what you really need to focus on. So I'm not sure if, at this point, if you want to.
So you'll need them to take action to be able to add the carpenter position back into the budget, is that right?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not sure, do you want to do that under consent or under action at the next?
Well, if, if it's okay to put it in consent, if everybody's okay with it.
Yeah.
If we're doing that, and do we have, so our ADM, you still feel like, and I've watched the numbers that get sent to us, you still feel that those are a little lower than we're actually, I mean, with the projection we've made, right? Should we, should we make that adjustment in there as well? Um, I, I always like to be more conservative than, um.
Well, your, your, you know, your ADM that we budgeted on, I mean, that's what you budgeted, right? So when we had to look at next year's budget, if you want to be more conservative.
Can't move the, or correct the budget if we see that happening.
We just have to, you'd, you'd have to reduce the budget.
The revenue, yeah, but, a- and then the biggest, second part of that is, why? What, what do we, I, I realize we're not bringing in business, we're not bringing in people, we're not, you know, it, we're not, I don't think we're growing as a population. Um, so do, do we have, I mean, are we losing them to private schools? Are we not putting the fact, how, how great our, our Roanoke County Public Schools are? What, why are we continuing, and I know kids, you know, everybody says, oh, kids, you know, people don't have kids anymore, but why are we losing the, these numbers?
Yeah, we could come back and give that report. I think you'd have to look at, uh, we can look at withdrawal codes, which usually tells you where somebody went to, like if somebody withdrew to a private school or to another state.
I think that would be helpful.
We can look at those codes, and we could also look at, for example, you know, was kindergarten enrollment down more than anticipated? Those kinds of things, we can bring that back.
I'll refer back to the chair, but, um, you know, to, to talk about that, but I just think that's, would be nice for us to know.
Well, and how long ago was the study that we did?
Demographic study, the one that.
Was that about two years ago?
That was last year.
With the county?
Yeah, that was last year.
They presented it last July, I think.
And it, that was kind of reported that it didn't seem like it was going to decline too much.
Yeah, definitely a study declined, but not dramatic.
Right.
And that we were maximizing all of our facilities.
Yes, I was just at Virginia High School down in that Bristol, Tennessee area. It's a beautiful school, beautiful facilities. You should see the gym. It's like a college gym. They, their population, I asked what their number was, their students, they've kind of, they've been cut in half. So they used to have over two thousand students, they're under a thousand now, in just a matter of years. It's crazy.
Did they know what?
Where are these kids going?
People aren't having babies.
That's what I was going to say, is I think it's more of a societal.
It's a societal thing, people just aren't having babies.
I agree with that.
Have your babies, people.
Believe that.
But if he can, if we can see where people are going, that might help.
It's not that they're not going.
They didn't stop having babies last year.
Well, two thousand seven, two thousand seven was the number.
Yeah, all of a sudden, we're going to stop having babies this year.
There's demographic data out there on it, but two thousand seven was the magic number during the crash, people just started.
Yeah, I get that part of it, but, you know, why so many this year, you know, or last year, I think? We had the same, we had a big number, you just showed us, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars we lost off ADM.
It's going to keep dropping.
And when you're projecting your ADM, you get like, what is it, three data sources? And we just, you have to kind of pick where you are so you can choose your different philosophies, right? If you, if you pick too low, then you leave potential money on the table for raises and things of that nature, nature. But if you pick too high, you end up.
Well, but if we pick low, we still get the actual at the end of the year, right? We get that adjustment.
You do, you do, but when you're budgeting in to, to build the budget and, like, you want to give a five percent raise, it's kind of a gamble. So you just have to determine what your philosophy is going to be. Are you going to be more conservative in projecting your ADM? Are you going to go in the middle, or are you going to go on the high end?
Yeah. Okay, well, I just, it'd be nice to know where these kids are going.
Yeah.
I've also said in the past that we should look at putting Hinton Valley Middle School over at Hinton Valley High School. You got land over there, and it's just, there's lots of land over at Hinton Valley High School. Hinton Valley Middle School is getting smaller and smaller, so that needs to be something we look at in the future, combining those campuses. It'll save them money on transportation, bus routes, makes it more convenient for parents in terms of pickup and everything else, too. But having two separate campuses, we know, is never ideal.
All right, so then, moving into the health insurance fund, these are the numbers at the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, I've got our budget, our actual and our difference on here. So our revenues were twenty-four point eight million and our expenditures were twenty-six point five million. So we did have a negative, uh, negative balance of one point six million. Um, you can see we transferred two point eight million in, uh, we, we transferred the two million you already approved, but then there was still money left in insurance budget and different accounts in the general fund, um, and we requested permission to go ahead and move that, um, as well. This is the same practice that the county does to try and shore up their health insurance. So if they have budgets set aside that's not used, uh, the unused insurance budget would have come from when, when I transferred the million dollars, the two million, the two one million dollar transfers, I just took that from salaries. I did not take it from the insurance budget. Uh, so that left the insurance budget, any of the payroll laps that occurred, any of these employees that we didn't hire, that's where the extra eight hundred nineteen thousand would have come from. And so I think that, um, doing everything I can to get more money into our health insurance fund. And so at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-five, we will have two point two million, the two million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one in health insurance reserves. Um, so moving forward and kind of thinking about what's going on in the current year, um, running the numbers through August, our insurance reserves are four point six million. So because we, we infused a, a little over two million dollar transfer, um, in the budget as per, was approved when we adopted the budget, so that helped put a big chunk of money into it. Um, we received a letter from the insurance company every year in August, and they make a recommendation. Uh, typically, they, they give us a range, but this year they gave us a minimum recommendation. Uh, their minimum recommendation is five point two million to hold into, in reserves. Um, I went ahead and did a very rough, quick estimate of where we'll land at the end of this year, and we're still looking at, at having reserves of only two point seven million. Um, the first two months, how I came about this number, the revenues, I looked at payroll and just estimated out the total withholdings from, um, our payroll projection and then, uh, the employee benefit share of it, so that number I feel pretty comfortable about. And then on the expenditure side for the claims, um, this is never an easy estimate to, to guess how much we're going to have to pay in claims, right? So just for the purposes of today, I took fourteen months, so I took all of last year plus the two months of this year and averaged them and said, that's what, for the next ten months, we will have in claims. It, it may be higher or lower. I mean, this is a rough, rough, rough estimate. Um, but I, I felt like you needed to see something. The first two months, our claims were around one point seven million, and that's higher than what we started out last year. And so I just want you aware that we still are having, we still have sick people. We have claims that are out there. Um, I don't think it's a time for an alarm, but I do think we want to keep our pulse on this number.
Um, don't most people get their extra things that they need taken care of before the school year starts, though?
Maybe, but she's saying it's higher this year than it was last year.
Saying it's harder than last year.
Something happens that, it's, you know, unforeseen.
Just don't.
The five million, two forty-seven, the recommended, did that go up this year?
It did. It was around four million last year.
Yeah.
And is that recommended what we should have at year end, or is that recommended what we should have currently? Because it's not that far off what we have now, but it's two and a half million dollars off of your projection for June.
The letter just says you should hold that in reserves, so they don't say at year end, they just say that's the recommended level.
So theoretically, at the beginning of the year, we should have that much in there. So we're, what, about six hundred thousand, Shaw?
Yeah.
And at the end of the year, should we have that much in there, too?
Uh, probably. Now, like I said, these are very rough numbers and, and they are going to change. And like you've seen, we were, uh, providing estimates on a weekly basis and, and the insurance just goes up and down. It also depends on the lag, right? And so to your question about, do most people have work done in the summer? There's usually a lag by the time the medical expense hits our books, right? Because you go to the doctor, the doctor bills your insurance, and then insurance will bill less, and it's a couple of months in there. Uh, so that's probably why we're seeing the one point seven million a, as a claim level at the beginning. I'm hoping maybe that'll, it, it, it will come down a little bit.
With the change in plans that had to take place, that should save some money based off of what your averages were last year, correct? Because I know that was part of some of the issue of changing the plans was to save some money. So hopefully the average will be less than what you're projecting based off of last year's plans versus this year's.
It definitely should be.
Yes, and where are we at with that timing of things that you had in mind to look at? Remember that discussion with HSA?
In regard to the, to the flex spending card timing versus, instead of doing it in January, doing it when the, in July, basically the, where your deductibles start each year.
We had some advice, because what we don't want to do is harm existing employees, right? Um, and so that's what, if we made that change, we would either harm existing employees or the recommendation to us would be, we could use health insurance reserves to cover that six months for our employees, and it wouldn't be too costly because it's their out-of-pocket.
But once that one-time adjustment would be made, then it would be fine because then we would be moving forward.
Yes.
We just have to be in a good spot to do it.
Right, you, you don't have a figure on what that would cost you.
No, we, we, we do not, not yet. But we'll work on that for the budget season. And what I'm hoping is, well, like the two point seven million, like I said, this is very rough. I mean, just to get a number in front of you to let you know that the claims are still high, right?
Well, and the nine hundred thousand, because I think it was going to go to nine hundred thousand with the healthcare provider that we're no longer going to use in-house, to save that money, is that, that's going towards the reserves as well?
Well, we didn't budget for the, for the clinic this year at all.
Right, that's what I mean. So the money that we were putting towards that, that we were going to put towards it, we're now shifting that into the health reserves?
Yes.
Which is almost not, it would be nine hundred thousand, I believe, this year, because it was going up.
It was going up.
So it's going to be around nine hundred thousand dollars going towards the health insurance.
Yeah, nine twenty-five or something.
But that's already been factored in.
It has been, yeah.
Right, I'm just saying that if we didn't do that, we'd be short almost a million dollars.
That's right.
That's right.
So then, this is just a visual of the revenue, the expenditures, and the fund balances on the line of kind of where we've been from twenty twenty up until, uh, you can see where we are at August and then the very rough estimate for June.
Is that in here? We're working on it.
No, this is one of the last ones I was updating.
You added that?
I was literally working on that in the corner.
Yeah, these were my work.
They kind of moved, okay.
And you probably don't have August in.
I don't, but that's okay.
And June on there. I added that sitting in there.
You don't have a big pan of, fan of pen and paper.
And I do apologize for not having.
No, that's okay.
So any other questions on this? We'll put in consent agenda, this topic, but then the approval for the carpenter position.
All right. Item two point zero nine, request to accept two hundred thousand dollar donation from Alros Steel Foundation and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars for minor capital project funds, special project funds, Ms. Susan Peterson.
So we did receive a two hundred thousand dollar check, uh, from Alros Steel, which is a wonderful donation and it was announced, I guess, the last time y'all met. We, we are bound by government law, so we can't spend it until we appropriate it. And staff, uh, has some specific items that they would like to, uh, purchase for the program already. Uh, the, the money is designated for Burton Center and it is for, uh, to purchase tools and supplies for the welding and motorsports programs. Uh, we do have exactly two hundred thousand dollars in the project fund, the minor capital project fund, um, and undesignated grants, uh, and special projects. And so my recommendation is to go ahead and just allocate this out. By having that amount out there, we do not have to take this to the school board, but if we have another grant in the minor capital fund, we would have to take that to the, to the, I said, school board, to the board of supervisors, to the appropriation. And so we can roll this on to, uh, your meeting at the, the next regular meeting for consent and then the money will be free and clear.
And speaking of minor capital, I, we, I had talked to this with some board members. I still wanna bring forward the, uh, softball field that we had tabled for, uh, for Bird. And not sure when we wanna walk that on to get it approved, but, uh, we can talk about that later. Everybody's okay with that?
Yep. Anything else? All right. Item two point one zero, request to accept three hundred thousand dollars as part of the Go Virginia Region Two Go Tech Launch Project and appropriate, appropriate three hundred thousand dollars from Grant Fund Special Funds, Special Project Funds, Ms. Susan Peterson.
All right, um, so, and Mr. Sir can probably do a much better job of explaining this, uh, but the Go Virginia is a nonprofit company and they are working up into regions. They have received a state grant, state monies, that they have distributed for this Go Tech Launch Project. Uh, Montgomery County Public Schools is managing the entire project for our region. And they have de- designated a hundred and fifty thousand for each of our two middle schools, Hidden Valley and William Bird Middle School, uh, to put in place, um, a career lab. Uh, so the money is a little more complicated. We've got three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for both of the labs, so one fifty each. And that amount, we do have undesignated grants in the grant fund that we can appropriate to this, uh, without going to the board of supervisors, uh, so that's not a problem in the grant fund. The unique thing with this grant is it does have a very specific match. Um, there's a hundred and fifty thousand of cash and in kind, uh, and this is going to be covered by existing teachers that are gonna be teaching the, the two classes, right? Uh, so we'll just allocate their percentage of time, um, that they spend teaching these blocks as opposed to other blocks that are not part of the lab. Um, and that'll take care of the hundred and fifty thousand cash. Uh, we also have sixteen thousand dollars for admin fees that we pay back. Um, and that'll be in two iterations, eight thousand this year and eight thousand next year. And Mr. Sir is building that into the Perkins Grant. And he did verify that we could use the federal money to match. We just could not use state money to match, since it is a state grant. There are a couple other, uh, items, uh, related to it. There is an MOU that is very large. We have sent the MOU to the, to our lawyers to review and ensure everything is wonderful. Within the MOU, we are required to purchase the seventy-five percent of the equipment by, uh, December thirty-first and the rest by March thirtieth. Um, I think they're chomping at the bit to get the equipment, so I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I think they're gonna have it spent well before these deadlines. Um, they'll ho- host an open house for the labs to show off, uh, the wonderful things they're doing in them. Um, they'll have quarterly reporting, um, on the expend, expenditures, the spending, the match on the student engagement, uh, with the lab. And then under the admin, uh, regulations, they'll have, um, the teacher will be trained in Go Tech Teacher Training Academy and they'll use that curriculum. Uh, they'll have to follow all the regular federal and state laws. And then they'll have ongoing evaluations through surveys and data reporting as well. Um, and the MOU is attached in board docs if you wanna read through it. Um, our plan is to, if the lawyer comes back and says no changes to that MOU, we can roll this to consent. If the lawyer brings changes, we can roll it to action, um, just to let you know what changed in the MOU.
How was it those two middle schools were selected?
Two schools with the most active, teachers with the most active, um, students in those areas that would be affected by a Go Tech grant. We're, we're planning to, um, iterate this out in future years to the other schools as well.
Mr. Sir, can you give us the ninety-second version of what the Go, Go Tech Lab is all about?
Sure. The Go Tech Lab is designed and, um, uh, orchestrated to help our middle school students, um, explore at the middle school level the career pathways in a better fashion than we're able to provide currently. Um, it has, uh, a lot of manufacturing, uh, modules involved, some health science involved. And as you know, at Burton Center and in our county CTE offerings, we have those career pathway programs at the high school level. We want our students and, and the state sees through this Go Virginia funding the, um, opportunity to fund these labs to help students explore those earlier. Oftentimes we hear about, uh, you know, we've gotta get to the students earlier, you know, middle school, some, you know, even elementary. But in this case, we'll be able to do some significant, um, equipment purchases that will help, we'll have a, a welding simulator for the students. We've never had one of those for the middle school students. That would be great for our students to be presented with prior to entering ninth grade, when they have the opportunity to look at the, the welding program over at Burton Center. Uh, robotics will be involved, some health science, um, I think we have some mannequins coming in. So it'll be an opportunity for those students to explore those career pathways earlier, much like we've been saying needs to happen. So I hope that helps. It's an exciting opportunity. I mean, out of the five school divisions, uh, we got two, uh, labs for Roanoke County. Um, and, and each of the other divisions got one in this go around. So the next iteration, my hope would be to get at least one more for another one of our middle schools and then, uh, proceed from there. The next year, may, hopefully be able to flesh it out.
You know, it might not be a bad idea to have you come and present, because I'm sort of on that committee and it's fascinating. You can look at the map of Virginia and see where the schools are and the piloting programs and how they've added schools as they've gone along and the evolution of the programming. It would be really great for our stakeholders to hear about this exciting program. So I don't know if we can add that onto one of our work sessions in the future.
And Mr. London, Mr. Sir, myself, and Mr. Jones as well, went and visited the Go Tech Lab in Franklin County last year prior to him per, uh, pursuing the grant. And it's amazing, the program, the professional development, the teachers get, uh, and how it aligns with what we offer at the high school level.
Well, it seems like a great opportunity. I'd love to see it in all five of our middle schools.
Us, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so you'll need to appropriate as well to approve the MOU. Either, we'll put it either put on action for next time depending upon what the attorney say or consent.
Yeah, one or the other. We won't know that yet.
So I've got three recommendations. One is to appropriate, one is to approve the matching, and one is to.
And the matching, okay.
I think it's all written in there.
Item two point one one, review of two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five SOL results and accountability updates, Mr. Ben Williams.
All right, um, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, I'm here today to talk about, uh, our standards of learning results from spring of twenty twenty-five as well as give you a preview of some accountability changes that are coming down the pike that are gonna definitely, uh, move our cheese a little bit. So, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, to explaining what the, what those look like. Uh, before I, uh, go into it in detail, I wanna let you know, uh, in the interest of transparency, we've put in, uh, three different files into the board report as well. One's the raw state data, uh, for the, for the division. One is the, uh, the longitudinal results from, uh, you know, going all the way back to twenty eleven for Roanoke County. And, um, and the other one is a file that, uh, shows the results of all the other school divisions in the state of Virginia and that uses the, the raw state data. Um, the reason why you have some different ones is that the raw state data that the state provides is about two, you know, maybe two percentage points different than the data that we've got on our longitudinal results. Um, the reason why you see the, that difference is basically who's counted. Um, typically when we run our results, we remove, uh, kids that transferred like right before the tests and things like that. We remove, um, students who, uh, uh, or at least who had the parent refusals, that sort of thing. Um, so they don't show up as, as zeros. They didn't take the test, you know, that's, that sort of thing. Um, so those are typically removed, whereas the state, uh, published results are actually almost completely raw. So, um, so just, just so that, uh, you're aware of that. So, um, so if you wanna see your individual schools, um, the tabs at the bottom of this sheet have, uh, the individual elementary, middle and high schools. There's a tab for each. And from, uh, from this sheet, this attachment, um, the panes are frozen on the left columns. So you, Roanoke County's the first one and you can just scroll over and see all the other, um, divisions in the state of Virginia. You're looking for divisions that have lots of green. And thankfully you can see on the first row or the first column that, um, that we are, uh, that we've got some green there, uh, a pretty good, uh, good amount. So, uh, I, I'm pleased there. So in terms of how we did overall, um, um, you know, you, you've previewed this well for me already. So, uh, so, um, you know, if you look, if you just combine the test by subject, which, you know, is an odd way to do it, but if you just combine them all, generally we're up about a point in, uh, a percentage point in reading, uh, one percentage point in math, two in science and about flat in, uh, in social studies. Uh, obviously we'd wanna get a little more in the weeds than that. Um, one thing that we are gonna have to watch a little more closely is state rank. The, um, the, the tests, uh, next year are gonna use different cut scores. So we're not gonna necessarily be able to say, oh, well, we went up or down from last year. The cut scores will be so different that, uh, we'll really need to look at state rank to see how we did. Um, so we'll have to wait until the, uh, you know, until that comes in. But in terms of last year's rank, last year's rank was good, uh, eighth, uh, in reading, seventh in math. Um, this year's rank, uh, seventh in reading, uh, sixth in math out of a hundred and thirty-one. Um, science and social studies, uh, are not, you know, where our reading and math is, but it's, you know, it's, it's what you focus on, um, eighteenth and nineteenth. Now, you might wonder, where should Roanoke County be? Like, if we were operating at, uh, essentially, uh, normal, you know, for a school division with our demographics, with our, uh, community educational attainment, with our, um, you know, our, our, you know, rate of, uh, poverty. Uh, if we took those for Roanoke County, we would be about twenty-fifth, you know, out of a hundred and thirty-one. So, so if we were at twenty-fifth up here in state rank, I would be telling you, we're kind of right where we would normally be. So, uh, so for, you're seeing seventh and sixth, um, there's a lot of wealthier divisions with, uh, you know, more, more educated parents and families that are doing worse than we are. So that's, that's, uh, you know, hate, hate it for them, good for us. In terms of, uh, relative strength, uh, you know, I do wanna to, to, to point out some things that we're, we're really doing well. Uh, fifth grade math was up seven, uh, and was fourth in the state. Uh, that's a big jump, uh, seventh, you know, and for a whole grade level, thousand kids, that's a big jump. Um, fourth grade reading was up two, which is a moderate increase. But if you look at the group, the same group in third grade reading, in third, they actually went up six from where they were in third grade reading. So that's a big, big jump there. Um, sixth grade reading was up five, um, that was an area of focus for us. Uh, seventh grade math was, uh, tied for fourth in the state. Seventh grade math has been our shining star in Roanoke County for years. It's like, you know, we, that is where we, you know, where we shine the high, the brightest. And we've been up among the, the top in the state for a long time there. Um, I wanna brag on our girls. Um, you know, you hear stories about, uh, you know, about, about research in math and about how, you know, maybe teachers favor boys in STEM and all the things like that. And, you know, so, uh, but actually, um, if you look at our girls, our girls in math are fourth in the state. So if you've got a female, if you got a daughter, send your daughter to Roanoke County Public Schools and she will do, you know, probably better in math than she would've done somewhere else and maybe get a good STEM job. So, uh, so, you know, that's a, uh, you know, that's kind of a cool thing. So, uh, the other thing is that, uh, we do look at divisions that are similar in demographics to us. Um, and, uh, and we are first relative to those divisions that we look at. Divisions like Williamsburg, James City, Albemarle. Uh, we used to look at some divisions like Hanover and York, but they've actually gotten far wealthier than we are now. Um, but, uh, you know, we, uh, we, we continue to try to monitor divisions that are, that are like us and, and see how we do relative to them. Now, um, you know, I don't like saying areas of weakness, so I use growth opportunities. Uh, but eighth grade science, we actually went up, but, um, but I'm still, uh, I'd still like to see that go up more. We're, we're on a journey with eighth grade science and we're not at our conclusion. Um, world history one, uh, we're moving world geography into world history one over time. And, uh, the, basically we need to adjust better to the changing demographics there. I'd like to see the pass rates higher there. Um, third grade reading's been flat for a few years and that is a, that's a big area. So I'd like to see third grade reading move up a little bit. I think that we're building, that we've got the building blocks in place. Uh, we need to come around to, uh, the comprehension side. I think we've been, we've spent a lot of time on the access side, meaning teaching kids to read so that they can access the test. But the test doesn't actually assess whether you can read. It assesses things like figurative language and main idea, you know, English concepts. So, uh, so, you know, those are probably the areas we need to, to focus on.
We're still punching well above our weight, though.
Absolutely. We are tied for twelfth in the state. So, uh, so you gotta understand, if we're not first in the state, I'm, I'm, I'm not happy. I'm, I'm kind of.
You don't have false church.
To clarify for the public, I believe there's a hundred and thirty-two school districts.
Yes.
So when we're talking these numbers, we're talking about out of a hundred and thirty-two school districts. That's huge. Yeah, and, and like I said, if we're not first, then we need to work on that. Um, so, uh, no, actually you mentioned false church. Uh, yeah, false church is, is typically number one every year. But false church is a tiny little super rich enclave in Northern Virginia and it has no, you know, it has no poverty, essentially.
I think it's the wealthiest.
It's one of the wealthiest in the country.
In the country, yeah.
No excuses being if we're not number one, you're not. I mean, I'm sorry, but, uh, you know, our kids are, our kids can do well. Um, and, uh, the other one that's actually doing really well right now is, uh, second and actually ahead of false church in one test is, um, Lexington City. Uh, now you wouldn't think Lexington City, but they're, they're a two-school division. They, uh, they only have seven hundred kids and they don't have a high school. Their kids go to Rockbridge County for high school. So it's like an asterisk sort of division. So I don't count that.
Sure they love that you say that.
They can, yeah. No, they should be proud of their, of their elementary and, uh, middle school results. They, uh, but anyway. Uh, biology, now biology is a weird test. Um, biology, we, we went down a couple, um, it's not at the, the pass rate I'd like to see. The issue we're running into. The issue we're running into is that almost all the kids that take the biology test have already met their verified credit requirements, meaning the only reason they're taking the biology test is to make the feds happy, because it's a federally required test. And so you're, they're basing, you know, basically, you're doing it because federal law says you have to do it, and there's no, there's nothing for the kids. And so that's basically the issue with biology. I think we've got a motivation issue, but it's not just a student motivation issue. I think sometimes the teachers get a little bit of, you know, oh, well, this is just, you know, something you have to do, you know, I'd like to see the teachers a little motivated.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
Is there a way to change that motivation now, I'm wondering?
Well, I will tell you what some other school divisions are doing across the state. They've eliminated earth science as the ninth grade test. So some school divisions, even ones around us, have earth science, which we do in ninth grade, do it in eighth grade. Or they've gone to, there's no set sequence for science classes, so they've gone to do in like bio one, bio two.
Environmental is a lot of times what they use for...
So either they're taking the biology test as their high school verified credit, which does put more skin in the game, or they're actually doing, it is environmental and then biology, but the two kind of, the standards overlap, so they're basically getting...
Yeah, I like this, to see the...
The difficulty with that, with a division our size compared to smaller divisions, is if in sciences for high school, you have to have a specific endorsement for that science. So it's not like, like you're a math teacher, you have a secondary math endorsement, you can teach any math in high school. Whereas in the sciences, you have to have an earth science endorsement, a biology endorsement, a chemistry endorsement. So as far as finding the teachers to do that, to make that switch, it's not that you can't do it, that's an extra challenge for a district with five high schools.
My general thought on this always has been that if you put earth science in ninth grade, earth science, in my opinion, is maybe a little easier test, but if you put earth science in ninth grade, you can knock out your verified credit requirements in ninth grade, and if you don't get them in ninth grade, then you have that biology as your backup.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, so having that biology as your backup's kind of nice. I like checking the boxes as early as possible, rather than putting all your eggs in one basket.
But you could try to check the box for biology as a freshman, first year, and then check the box again later, and actually, the earth science is probably easier than the biology.
Yeah, and another option that the state is pushing right now, and some divisions do this, is move earth to eighth grade and do bio in ninth.
That's where you get into your endorsement challenge with that, is what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I'm not recommending that, because you're gonna run into, you know, having to tell your, you know, your favorite coach, you know, you're gonna have to move schools and things like that, and that's, now, it could be quite disruptive if we did that.
Did that change, you discussed, was that coincide with COVID? Because I noticed the eight or nine years before COVID, it was about a 90% SOL rate, and on that last slide you had, and since COVID, it's 79% average.
So the difference was that, it's the way that it's working for, you know, accountability as well, but, but, yeah, I mean, it's gotten to the point where the test itself has gotten a little harder. I think that we've had a challenge in, you know, in getting, you know, really, you know, hiring the absolute best in terms of, you know, STEM fields. You know, there's competition out there, and, you know, and when we've got a biomedical center, and, you know, there's a lot of other opportunities out there for folks in bio, but, you know, in that area, a lot of folks are choosing to go elsewhere. So I think, you know, getting the right people is a big challenge in bio.
I mean, what year did it change to where biology wasn't a test everyone had to take, except for it was the fed test? Like, when I taught it, you had to pass the biology SOL.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you used to have to have multiple verified credits, and that was about that time, it was about like eight or nine years ago. So, so, yeah, yeah.
Is it an amazing when you lower expectations? That's exactly what happens, we've got, right? I mean, that's how I look at it, is when you raise expectations, our students rise to meet them, when you lower them, you don't have that extra verified credit, then that happens.
And it does sometimes happen, and we're gonna talk about expectations in a bit, and trying to figure out where, where you get that, you know, where you find the sweet spot. In terms of special highlights, I don't like going too much into individual schools in this meeting, because, you know, if we talk about individual schools, inevitably, we're talking about people, you know, and, you know, when you're talking about people, there's personnel issues and things like that involved. But in terms of special highlights, Green Valley's fifth grade, they went up in the high teens in every one of their fifth grade tests, and that's not just a good cohort coming in, that's a, they, that cohort improved as well over where they were in fourth grade, but big, big point increases there. Every student in fourth grade at Bonsac passed all three of their SOL tests, which is pretty cool, you know? I mean, a whole grade level just wiped the table clean there, so that's pretty neat. We had a giant 29-point increase in Virginia Studies at Mountain View, and Glender High was our only school that absolutely, you know, held steady or went up in every single test, which isn't easy to do, because, you know, groups come in and out, and they have relative strengths and weaknesses, but, but, you know, that was, that was strong. In terms of Rounton County relative to the state, you can see that we're in the green all the way down to bio, and like we've said before, you know, there's maybe a third to half of the divisions in the state where bio is their verified credit test, so it is, you know, I mean, that could be part of the, what you're looking at there, but I still think we can improve that. So looking at, looking at bio, I want to see that flipped, at least flipped. But earth, the one that we do get verified credits in, we're over, we're ninth up, so, so, you know, we're good there. And you can see our grade seven, I was telling you, that's our sort of the linchpin there, that seems to be our area of greatest strength. One thing that we haven't talked about a lot, and I haven't shown you this on previous, previous board reports, is how do we do with our student learning groups? How do we do with our disadvantaged students, our racial groups, our, you know, our students with disabilities, our Ls? And we're well ahead of the state average, you know, in all of those. Our English learners are doing, you know, beautifully, our Hispanic students are doing great, our disadvantaged students are doing great, so pretty significant increases across the board above the, above the state. So in terms of SOLs, you know, I think that, you know, we're making incremental gains. The big changes we're making right now are in terms of, yeah, of providing teachers with common assessment resources, and really trying to help align instruction and make sure we're at the right level of rigor, so that, so that we're challenging kids and we're meeting the level that the test is expecting. Whereas that, those levels are gonna be changing a little bit. In terms of accountability, we previewed with you several months ago, the new accountability system that's gonna be announced, you know, the results of which are gonna be announced in the next month or so. And just to remind you, this is, this, where every school in the state of Virginia is gonna be put in a bucket, it's gonna be distinguished, on track, off track, needs intensive support, and so we do not know, you know, we're, what, a month into school now, or, no, a month, maybe two or three weeks into school now, but we do not know where we're gonna fall yet with our schools, and the reason why is we don't have the state growth numbers yet. That's a big chunk, and the state growth numbers, the way they do that, they compare our kids against cohorts of kids in other divisions, so I can't, I don't have that data for the kids from other divisions in order to run it. So I'm waiting on the state to do that, and that's what's holding them back right now. But anyway, the real question for most of our, you know, schools is distinguished or on track. You know, we're gonna have a couple that are gonna be, you know, gonna be close, that are gonna, you know, they're gonna give us some nail biting, but we'll see. But, but like I said, somewhere in the neighborhood of, end of September, early October, we should have a good idea where we, where we fall. Just to remind you, the system components are here in terms of the SOL mastery and how much that weighs, the growth piece, high school doesn't have growth, they have the federal graduation indicator and 3E, which is another kind of tricky piece to run. And then there's the readiness, including chronic absenteeism, et cetera. Our absenteeism rates have improved, so we're doing well on chronic absenteeism right now.
Where are we compared to the rest of the state?
I don't have the state data for every division, but, but, you know, the last time I did see state data on that, we were significantly ahead, like, we were well outpacing them in terms of getting kids back. The one thing that I'm watching really closely, and this is gonna be particularly significant for schools that have high L populations, like Burlington, Mountain View, you know, those, those schools, the way that the 10-point category works for L growth, we want our students to learn English, like, that's their primary goal when they come here. If they can't, if they don't know English, we have to teach them English first before they can learn anything, okay? Or, you know, at least before they can learn to their, their potential. And so, so 10 points of this new system is how quickly are they learning English? And the state goal is to have 58% of your students meeting their level of proficiency. But the issue is, if you meet the state goal and hit 58%, you actually lose 4.2 points out of your 10. So it's not like if you meet the state goal, you get all your points. If you meet the state goal, you get, you know, you're actually down 4.2. The issue with being down 4.2 is that those categories, distinguished, on track, and all that, there's only 10 points between them, and so you're dropping down halfway out of distinguished, you know, pretty much right off the bat with your L group. And so, so we're doing some things to elevate our numbers this year, in particular in L, but, but we're particularly watching schools with high L populations, because the one in particular, Mountain View, you know, they took kind of a hit in this, in these 10 points, almost dropped a full category. So, so that was, that's one that we're, you know, we're watching closely there. The reason I bring that up is that in every one of our schools that has 15 L students, in every one of those schools, we lose more points in the 10-point category than we do in the 50 or 55-point category for SOLs, meaning those few L kids, you know, we might have 20 L kids at a school, they actually, you know, we lose more points on them than we do on the 700 kids who take the SOLs. It's just the way the math works, and so that's, now, that might change next year, and you'll learn why in a little bit. All right, the next thing is, we've got a law that was passed that we're watching closely, HB 1957 is no longer a bill, it's a law. It does have a two-year activation date, so it doesn't go, didn't go immediately into effect, but it does some interesting things, some controversial things around the state. First off, it takes SOL testing in seven through 12 and says they can, you can only do that in the last 10 days of school. Now, sounds good, okay, you know, I'm all for instructional time. The issue we run into is that that also includes expedited retakes. So if you're taking eighth grade, eighth grade has five tests, I can move one earlier, which I've already done, I've moved that to April. So now we're at four tests in eighth grade, but if we have a student who needs a retake on all four tests, and, you know, that does happen, unfortunately, then basically, you've got eight days of testing out of 10. So, so, and then there has to be remediation at some point in between the tests, you know, that kind of helps. So, so anyway, that's where we're running into logistical, you know, challenges with that, but I, you know, we'll see if that stays. The General Assembly is gonna meet again, talk about this some more at their next session, so I'm curious about that, but I'm all for, you know, reducing, you know, there are ways that we can make that happen, we'll see if the General Assembly can get there. Changing the SOL scoring to 100-point system to make it easier for parents to understand, I don't have a problem with that, that is a, you know, that makes sense. Now, the other reason why they want to change it to 100 points is number three, where the SOL score would count as 10% of the student's final grade for the course in grade seven through 12. Now, that's interesting, because no SOL has ever been part of a student's actual grade. Now, there are places in the country that do that, it's not unheard of to do that. Here's the challenge on SOL testing being part of the grade. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm saying you gotta take into account certain challenges. For example, let's, we had a, we've had an issue virtually every year somewhere with a teacher going out on leave and having trouble filling that teacher's position, you know, so we'll rotate in long-term subs, long-term subs. So if you get in that situation, that student's SOL score is probably gonna be lower, because they've had lower quality instruction because of the long-term subs, okay? So through no fault of the student's own, the SOL score goes down, which means their grade goes down. Now, your grade is being hurt by something that's outside of your control. For example, another example, there's two teachers, one's a brand-new teacher, and one's a veteran rock star, okay? They teach the same course. You get the veteran rock star, you're more likely to get a high score on the SOL than if you get the brand-new teacher. So now, which teacher you get, it actually has an impact on your grade, you know? So there's, there's, there's things that they might not have completely thought through here, but, but it is something that, that, again, doesn't go into effect until spring of '27, so we'll see whether, you know, where that goes.
Hey Ben, just out of curiosity, what other states roll something like that into their assessments?
You know, I, I need to go back and get a list for you, I'll do that, but I want to say, I gotta go look at Florida, I was thinking Florida, and I think some of the...
Arkansas, maybe?
Yeah, I've got to go get a list, but I know with 100% certainty there are states that do it, I just don't recall the ones right off the top of my head.
A lot of states don't tie their state assessments to graduation.
And that's gonna be a big issue for the next topic.
Okay.
Yeah. So here, the biggest earth mover here, and this is the one that's like shaking the foundation of education behind the scenes, is this one. So, so at the last state board meeting, they were presented with the new reading and math cut scores for first review. They, it's unlikely that they're gonna adopt them at the next meeting, it sounds like they're gonna do a little, you know, go around the state and to get some, you know, more input, but, but the cut scores are a dramatic departure from our current cut scores. And when I say dramatic departure, it's, you know, I'm not exaggerating. The, they're designed to, and we've talked about this, they're designed to align to NAEP, so that our SOL proficiency levels go along with NAEP, which is considered, you know, the nation's report card, it's a federal test that's given. So essentially, what happens here is this, is that the proficiency level for NAEP is theoretically higher than the proficiency level in Virginia. You could make an argument that Virginia has the easiest cut scores in the nation, and, and so basically, what the governor promised to do is not have the easiest cut scores in the nation, but have the most challenging cut scores in the nation. And so that was one of the, the big campaign promises, all the way from even before the, you know, the beginning of the, of the administration. So, so if those, those cut scores are adopted, we've actually been able to project out, not just for Rounton County, but project out all the other schools and school divisions in the state, and expect SOL pass rates to drop 30 to 50 points. The primary concern in dropping 30 to 50 points isn't the drop itself as much as it is the kids who need them for verified credit, who need to graduate, and, and so something's gonna have to be done. If, where this has been done, you know, in other places, they don't have verified credits. You know, in Virginia, we've got verified credits, you gotta pass SOLs to graduate. Other states that have done this don't have that barrier, so you can have a, you know, pass rate... this don't have that barrier. So you can have a, you know, pass rate in the fifties, and you're not really worried about the pass rate in the fifties. Uh, here in Virginia, if your high school has a pass rate in the fifties, uh, that could be a challenge. Uh, I'll give you an example of what I'm looking at. Um, uh, we have a high school that had an algebra, um, pass rate of eighty-seven percent this year. That's okay, eighty-seven percent Algebra I. Okay? If the new cut scores were put into that, uh, the new pass rate would be twenty-nine percent.
They have to have that to graduate.
And realize, we're sixth in the state.
Yeah, we're sixth in the state. There, there are, there are school divisions that would be almost at zero percent. Yeah.
What's interesting is this is all in an attempt to close the honesty gap, right? Because there's a gap between these two
So the, so the real, yeah, so
So it's gonna, we're gonna see where the, you know, the proof is in the pudding because the SOL should be broader, like the NAP test, and that is the hope that it'll be more broader and not so much rigor, but more application, applied learning.
What they've looked at is, is primarily Tennessee. Tennessee, what, about fifteen years ago, um, did that. They were, uh, pretty low in NAEP, and they reali- they've realigned their cut scores, and now their pass rates are in the fifties, basically. Um, and, uh, they did go up considerably in their NAEP rankings.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, so, you know, theoretically, uh, you could move folks. There's a, there's a question as to whether NAEP, you know, proficiency should be the goal. You know, there's, there's, in Virginia, does our curriculum match? You know, there's, there's things that we teach one year where NAEP expects it in a different year, things like that. Um, remember, there's the whole idea about the kids take NAEP seriously, but that's an issue nationwide. Um, you know, because they, they're basically polled, they're chosen to be NAEP. Like, we did it at NAEP at Hidden Valley, and, um, you know, you, you, you basically pick a hundred kids, not picked, there's a, there's a sampling process. Hundred kids are picked, they go into a room. Uh, we have a lot of folks who then, uh, have their parents call and say, no, I'm not having my kid do that. So if you don't, if you're not lucky enough to have your parent get you out of it, then you're given, you're taking this national test that doesn't, you don't even get a score back for. So, you know, it, there's a question as to whether, you know, NAEP should be the goal. I'm not, that's a political question. That's not a ben question. I'm not giving you an answer one way or the other. And believe me, that's a, that's a place I don't wanna tread. But, um, but I do think there are, we, what we have to look at here are our kids. You know, what is the, what's the impact on our teachers, on our kids, on our student retention, on our teacher retention? When I say student retention, um, if you're looking at pass rates that are, you know, at, what I'm looking at here, you gotta wonder if somebody has the means, are they gonna go to private? Are they going to, you know, look at other alternatives? Um, here's a, yeah, a more detailed situation, a more detailed, uh, uh, look. Take a look at EOC reading. That's high school reading, and it's on the bottom right. So it's, passing it right now is four hundred. Um, for this spring, you'd need to get a four seventy-nine to pass it. Um, so, I mean, that's, that's almost a pass advance, uh, right now. So, uh, pass advance, you gotta get a five forty-three. That basically means you can miss it like two questions, maybe three. Um, so, um, so anyway, yeah, in terms of proficiency, uh, most of them are moving into the mid, uh, four hundreds. In the past, four hundred was always the, 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 the goal, uh, was always the passing number. They've released these numbers, they may revert to four hundred, but it would, it would still be scaled. So getting a four hundred would be the equivalent of getting a four forty-four or a four forty-nine. They haven't made a decision on that.
But if they also go to that hundred-point system, it'll be better.
It'll still be scaled. So, so, you know, a hundred points won't be like
It's kinda hard to understand what this means.
And, and a hundred points will actually be hard to explain too, because it won't be, I got, you know, I got forty out of sixty, I got a sixty-seven percent. You know, it won't be that way. Um, it'll be, I got forty out of sixty, and it scales in difficulty to this cut score, and then the psychometricians got involved, and then they've given you this number.
Okay.
That's really what it's gonna be. Um, so the hundred, the hundred won't mean a hundred percent. It'll just be out of a hundred. Um, so, uh, so anyway, like I said, uh, this is gonna be a whole new world, and we're, we're still learning. This will, I'm confident that there will be some changes between now and when this, you know, goes live in the spring. I don't know what those changes will be. Uh, there will certainly be a lot of discussion behind the scenes on that. But, um, you know, if it does come to fruition, then, uh, we're gonna have to do some, you know, parent, uh, prep ahead of time so that folks are aware, you know, what might be coming. Because, um, you know, uh, my, 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 uh, my, my pass rates might, uh, might not be looking, you know, I might not be able to show you a whole lot of green, uh, next year if this is the case. But, uh, I hope to still see a good state rank. Um, so, uh, so actually, I think state rank-wise, you know, we could be competitive. Um, some of those smaller divisions that, uh, that some of the small rural divisions are doing really well right now, I think they're gonna, they're gonna get hurt pretty badly in this. But, uh, but, uh,
Yeah, but for individual students that need to graduate, I mean, I mean,
There's always been a little bit of flux with that though, hasn't there? Like,
I mean, not if this is what happens.
Don't some teachers pa-
You have to pass it. You cannot graduate without passing it. If you're, if that's what this looks like, I mean, I'm thinking about individual students in high school right now.
What, what it'll do, and, and I've, I've been around long enough to know that if you put an insurmountable barrier in front of graduation, people will rise up with pitchforks. So I do believe that they will figure out a way to deal with the graduation issue. Um, however, um, you know, it, I, I think it will be more challenging, whatever that may be. Now, there's some things you can do. You could put substitute tests in place. We've got some. Um, you could, you could take verified credits out so that you don't have to pass the SOLs anymore. Uh, what some states do, um, is notice that fail basic? They let you have a certain number of fail basic, so that, uh, they, they move that verified credit to, you know, the, the lower number there. Uh, so that could be an option. But, uh, they didn't adopt a fail basic for the high school test. They'd have to go back and adopt some, some numbers there. Um, so there, there are some different options that they have, um, but I think it'll be the last moment. The other thing too is keep in mind that, um, you're gonna get a new administration between now and spring, whether it be the Sears adminis-, you know, the, uh, um, the Sears administration or the Spanberger administration, you're gonna get one or the other. And, um, and so, uh, they might have a different sort of opinion on the way this should go. Now, the state board does not turn over, and they're, you know, they, they have to see out their terms. So it's not like somebody's gonna come in and take the whole state board out and replace the state board. So, uh, so it's Yonkin's folks that stay on the state board who probably are the final determiners. But the general assembly probably will, will stick their toes in. You'll probably see, um, you know, the governor, whoever that may be, stick their toes in. Um, but this is gonna be an interesting thing for the governor because, uh, you're gonna have the fallout of this hit under their administration, um, you know, rather than the Yonkin administration. So, uh, so they're, they're, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have a challenge on their hands, uh, regardless of whether it's an R or a D beside their name. Um, all right. So I wanted you to know that ahead of time, uh, but, uh, I'll update you on, you know, later in the year in terms of where we are on that. But, um, you know, big picture, um, you know, we made some decent gains. Our state rank is looking good. We could always be better, and we strive to be that. Um, but we're gonna have some challenges in front of us. So, that's where we are. Any questions?
I think there's more questions than answers.
Yeah, um, that, that's, that is true. I've got my own questions, uh, as well, but, um, I, I'm, I think even the state can't answer some of those right now. It's a process. We're in the middle of a process. And, uh, it'll, um, it'll flesh itself out through political and public means in the next few months.
The most important thing is to raise expectations and our students are challenged.
Yeah, and the real question is, where is the, i- i- in other words, is, is the drop too big? Or is there a middle ground somewhere? And the, here's my, my personal thought on it, you know, and, and again, you know, take it for what you will. There's a lot of research on hope, that if you lower it too much, you get despair rather than hope. And despair, kids quit. But if you give them a challenge, they tend to rise to the challenge. And so if you're gonna increase expectations, the wi- in my opinion, the wise way to do it is incrementally over time, so that you keep that bar just in front. It's like the carrot that's, if you put the carrot a mile away,
That's right, you're gonna give up.
You're not gonna go. But if you put the carrot right in front, you know,
Need some little expectations.
Exactly. So that, that's my personal thought on it.
I agree with that. That's a, that's a good thought.
Any other questions?
No ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right. So, item three point zero one, closed session. Mr. Lynn, will you please read us into closed?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Runaway County School Board convene in closed session for the following: to consider a confidential matter as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia for purposes of discussion of the performance of specific, specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board.
Second?
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.